Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order. I would like to make a reminder on a couple items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all your electronic devices. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight and appreciate you joining us. In effort to have enough time from hearing from the audience members, we ask, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes to allow us to hear from everyone that would like to speak. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 1A, Planning Commission briefing of Tuesday, August 6, 2019. Item 1B, Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, August 7, 2019. Item 2A, Petition 10948, 2019, rezoned from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, LW Live Work, and the CN Conservation Districts located east of Veterans Parkway and northwest of East Twin Pines Drive. Item 2B, Petition 10950, 2019, rezoned from the RR Single Family Residential Rural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District at 7201 West 57th Street. Item 2C, Petition 10781, 2019, rezoned from the I-1 Light Industrial District to CN Conservation District located south of East 57th Street along the west side of Highway 11. Item 2D, Petition 10942, 2019, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Mystic Heights at Foss Fields located east of Veterans Parkway and northwest of East Twin Pines Drive. Item 2E, Petition 10943, 2019, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Twin Towers Second Edition located between East 3rd Street and East 5th Street and between Shawnee Avenue and North Twin Towers Circle. Item 2F, Petition 10972, 2019, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Grasslands Development located at the northwest corner of West 34th Street North and North Career Avenue. Item 3, Consent Agenda Approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing myself from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll also recuse myself from consent agenda and item 5A.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like any of these items removed and put on the regular agenda? Any commissioners?
You have a hand.
Which item would you like? 5F? Anyone else? Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moving 5F, or?
2F.
We approve first, right? Then we do the amendment?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to propose that we move item 5, or?
2F.
2F to the regular agenda, please.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to move 2F to the regular agenda? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. So then we'll vote on the consent agenda. Oh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. All right, then we, if you're here for any items that are on the consent agenda, you are able to leave now. Now we'll move to the regular agenda. I will need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the regular agenda as amended.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, Denise, can you read the first item on the regular agenda?
Item 2F, Petition 10972, 2019, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Grasslands Development located at the northwest corner of West 34th Street North and North Center Career, pardon me, and North Career Avenue.
Plan Commission, Albert Schmidt, City Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Office. This application is the preliminary plan. I'd also, just for your own knowledge on the next item, the rezoning is for the same exact land, the same exact request. So the preliminary plan for this location is with the applicant of Aaron Norman from Norman Engineering for the owner of Lloyd Companies. The approximate total size is 23.62 acres, generally located in northwest corner of 34th Street North and North Career Avenue. It's for the preliminary subdivision plans for the current name of Grasslands Development Edition. This specific location and land use has multiple zonings proposed in the next additional item, but the layout puts in there for single-family homes and apartments and keeps the office in there as well. The current plan in their place right now, going through review and sire, has some minor technical changes that we're looking at, ranging from engineering points to FUB plane management points on the overall plan. But with those in mind, between now and the city council agenda, we figured that we can review those, get those corrected and changed, and they can meet all the points inside that we need to, to take it forward to the city council. This planning commission, or the city planning staff, is requesting a recommendation for approval from this board based on the plans in place and the changes that we feel can be made within a reasonable time between now and this city council hearing.
Thanks, Albert. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
Luke Justin with Lloyd Companies, 101 South Reed Street. We are petitioning to, showing both the preliminary subdivision plan as well as the next item with the rezoning to develop a mix of uses on this site, ranging, as he said, from single-family homes to apartments and leaving the office as well. The apartment development will feature a range from center-load apartments to town home developments, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you guys might have.
Commissioners, any questions?
One item, just to note that right now it's undeveloped land, and we'll be making sure that as we perform our civil engineering, that all of the city retention and drainage requirements are met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that'd like to address this item? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Sidig, 3401 North Orion Drive. I only recently heard about this proposed development. There is substantial concern in my neighborhood that only like three homes somewhat adjacent to this proposal have been contacted. Our major concern is if this year we had this substantial rain, I mean, it's kind of an unusual, but even in normal years, my house backs up to one of the drainage easements with the culverts and stuff, and at times I've had four foot of water going through those culverts. My biggest concern is how this has developed. Will this impede any drainage from this subdivision in my area and back up water even further into homes and property lines? And if you look at the need for apartments, townhomes, there are multiple units in that area already under construction. There was an apex on Marion Road that are still units for sale. There's a new unit going up on Career Avenue that is potential housing. There's a sign for townhomes for rent in that same unit. So we kind of question, is this really needed for multi-use versus single-family homes, which might be a little more amendable to the community? I could answer any questions if you folks have anything.
Commissioners, any questions for Stephen? Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is David Watson. I live at 3108 North Galaxy Lane, and I border the direct planning changes. As the map that we're looking at up here, the little cutout at the bottom of 34th Street right before it hits the proposed floodway, the current flooding area, I don't understand how you're gonna put some houses there, because as it sits right now, we got several pictures and drone footage that will show you every time it rains, that's all underwater all the way up to the road. Vince Avenue, all that's flooded with three, four, five, six inches of water. And when we get those heavy rains that come in, that we've had three of them so far this year, it been two feet of water out there, and it stays there for a good, good week and a half. And it stays there. We've had water all the way up to the back of our property lines, and I've been in construction almost all my life, and then that in the military. You develop all that, all that water is being forced into that drain field, there's not enough ground there to take up the water without that whole, all the way down, all the way to the middle school, all the way around the corner. That's all been overgrown with foliage, and there's debris in there. The culverts are crushed at certain access points. You want to make all this work. That whole thing needs to be taken out to a commercial-sized turtle ditch that borders 29 from, I think it's 24th Street all the way down to 41st. You guys got that four-foot covert in there behind the new shopping center, and it goes all the way up. That's the only way you're gonna move all the water. I mean, I got it. We want to develop things. We want to build more homes. I get it. It's tax revenue. I'll be honest, but if we don't do something about the water, we're putting everybody in this, on the development to the left and the development directly to the south, where our insurance companies are gonna come in and start making us carry flood insurance, because the water comes up that high. There's no place for the water to go. It's all flat. There's no place for the water to go. And when I first moved in here four years ago, never saw a problem. The creek was dry. I was like, okay, went down and cut it down, you know, keep the bug bugs and stuff away. But the last three years straight, every time it rains, the thing fills up, three, four, five feet of water. At the highest point for this last flood, we just had, was it 42 feet off my backyard? So the middle of the water as shown on this graphic on the third lot up going from 34th Street North, yeah, about where that red dot is, right? Perfect, right there, six and a half feet of water, my tape measuring the creek. Me standing out there, put my tape measuring it, trying to figure out how much water was there and how fast it was moving. It's just too much. And there's no place for it to go, because if you go, if you follow this thing down where it goes across Marion, there's a bridge there, and then around the other side, some farmland, and that guy's got barbed wire fences and all sorts of craziness there and trees that are all overgrown, because it's farmland. I get it. You don't go out there and cut trees on farmland. You leave it alone. But that brings me to my, my last point, is that there are ways to fix this, and there's a path that goes a little north that comes across on Benson that looks like it was terminated at the fence, I mean, at the, the bridge that's over there where this waterway continues north. Put that path in there and start planting trees. Trees are good for the environment. They're good for water retention. They're good for water getting rid of. They purify the soil. They add habitat for birds. I mean, or let us plant trees. Right now, it's like a zero-mor retirement. Can't plant anything back there. But I'd be more than happy to put up two dozen trees lying in the back of that, that waterway, 16, 18 feet off the waterway, because you don't want it grown, so the roots go running through it and create the same problem all over again. You know, you use a tree base that's like 25 feet tall, so you don't get long-running roots everywhere, like cedars and stuff like that. And that would help with that, too. But we've got to do something about the water before we do anything on this side, because right now with that current road they just finished putting in, every time it rains, you just watch the water run off the grass, right down to the road, and then right as a river runs right over there. It keeps washing out the dirt that's there, right into the field, fills everything up, and everything starts backing up. So I, I think at this time, until the, the water can be addressed and the public is briefed on the water and it's to everybody's satisfaction, we saw real data and real plans how we're gonna get rid of all this water. I think you got to stop the, stop the rezone in the current waterway, because right now, as it sits, there's just no place for the water to go. You know, it kind of worries my wife. Have you ever heard, it's married knows unhappy life, unhappy wife unhappy life? Yeah, she's worried about this, because we've had water in the backyard now. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I think it'd be helpful, I don't have a question to view, sorry, if Albert first and the applicant second, comment about what was included in the next item, which had to do with the rezoning request, speaking to the issue of drainage.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this item before we bring up staff?
Hi, my name is Robert Delhany. I live at 3104 North Galaxy Lane, right next door to the gentleman that just spoke. Lived there for 13 years, and I have pictures that I can show you going back 13 years. And that area floods like there's no tomorrow, and it's getting worse every single year. When we had the March 20th with the snow and the rain event, that area back there where they're proposing to have single-family homes, their whole backyard would be underwater. September 20th of last year, or actually, I think it was September 24th of last year, same thing. The whole portion that is below, south of 34th Street and North Vincent Avenue there has filled up like a lake, just like it does to the north of this development, too. You've got 23.6 acres back there. That originally was supposed to be single-family, from what I understand. Now, with 9.6 acres for apartment complexes, 2.8 something for office space, you're talking, more than half of that 23.6 acres is going to be predominantly concrete and blacked out, which is what most apartment complexes and offices are. No place for the water to go, except right at us. I, myself, and several of my neighbors have said that we are going to put the city on notice, that if we get flooded, we will take legal action. Something needs to be done about it. It also has another problem that it's created, and that is, the city isn't able to maintain its own land back there, because it's too wet. They keep saying that all the time. Can't mow it. It's too wet. That's led to problems, because now we have coyotes in the neighborhood. You probably, last year, there was quite a bit on television, as two dogs that were taken by coyotes in our neighborhood. Guess what? They're back. One of my neighbors the other day told me, he lives on 35th Street. He says, do you have any animals? And I said, yeah, a dog. And he says, well, I came out to my car to go to work in the morning, rabbit in the front yard. Here comes a coyote and grabs a rabbit. That's on 35th Street, where there's plenty of homes. But the problem is, because that area isn't being maintained, I mean, you're talking grass that's literally this tall or taller. And there's a city park, by the way, adjacent to that. Now, I admit, they just finally cut that. But here's the problem. Our pets are in danger, because it isn't being taken care of, because it's too wet. Our children are also in danger. Having a city park there, God forbid something happens to a child in that city park, because it's too wet to mow. Something needs to be done. And approving this is not the way to go. It's only going to make it worse. Every year, it has got worse. And anyone who wants to see, I'd be more than happy to show you the pictures to prove it. I've been told that, the developer said that it's dry back there. Beg to differ, and I can prove different. It is definitely anything but that. We really need to have this denied. And I also, one of my neighbors was unable to make it here. He did give me a letter notarized to give to the planning commission, also stating his not wanting it to. And there are several other people here, I'm sure that they'll speak to. Like I said, it's not something we want, because it's putting our houses in danger. You know, it's kind of like I have a moat behind my house now, and your house is your castle. I don't want it to be overtaken by the moat. And like I said, something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Robert? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item?
Hi, Darla Woods, 3400 North Galaxy Lane. I live, if you look at the greenish-blue line and kind of go at it an angle, my house is kind of at that point. There's a group of trees there. The creek comes in, turns, and goes south from that point. I have lived there almost three years, and the day I moved in, I came into my new house and saw a lake behind my house, which was horrifying, because I was told that this was a wetland and that it was managed by the city. And I don't think developing this area is going to be a good way to manage this. Every time it rains two inches or more, that little creek comes out of its banks. And I know Bob has pictures, but in that kind of center area, again, up from the little green point there, that whole area fills up with water. The area, kind of the north, to the northeast, fills up with water. And then, as the water comes down the creek, this is not a big creek, and it's at its biggest point, probably closest to my house. As it comes down and goes around towards Marion, it becomes a very small creek. And the people that live next to it, and I don't know if anybody's here that has the yard that gets, backyard that gets flooded every time, but that gets very close to their backyards. And then when it goes across Marion, somebody mentioned there's farmland there. This spring, when the water was very high, the farmer actually had water on both sides of his driveway, probably not eight inches below the ground. And then we have to consider the people that live downstream from there. This huge amount of water that just then goes down, I don't know where it goes, but it, as Bob said, there's got to be a better plan. There's got to be a better water management plan, because our homes are threatened, our backyards are threatened. But I feel really sorry for the people who may buy property in that area and find out that they need three sump pumps to keep water out of their basements. So I hope you'll really take some time to consider this. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Darla?
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this item? Otherwise, we'll close public testimony. So we'll close, oh, one more? State your name and address for the record.
Violet Delhany.
Might want to pull the mics down a little bit. There you go.
Violet Delhany, 3404 North Galaxy Lane. I've been there 13 years, and every year we have had a lake back there. And it drains going south, past 34th Street, and it drains over in that area, and all of that area is all filled up. I've always been amazed how much water is there. And the first thing I thought when I got the letter about this meeting was, oh, no, we're going to be flooded, because there is just so much water. You really need to see the pictures that my son has. And I have some, too, that show that big amount of water. It's been right up on my backyard and all the way over to those apartments that, wherever they are, and those, and, and that whole area is full of water. And not only that, but it drains from the west side of Galaxy Lane, too, because all of that property, there's a little thing that, about two houses down from me, a little gulch thing, and all that water from that area drains in that back also. And I just don't think that they should consider doing any building there unless they have a proper study of what can be done to keep that water flowing and not have it back up, because if, if they build something and they, and they build up their land where they're building, then it's going to block that off, and then we're really going to have water. I, I really have been very concerned ever since I got this letter. And I guess that pretty well covers. But they can't do anything until they really, not just say they're going to take care of the water, but really know what they're doing and what the drainage system is and how large a drainage system it is, so that they can really cover the tremendous amount of water. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we're all talking about rain and floods, and if any places in council, I have three ready photos that you guys can see real quick, beginning, I need some actual graphics on this. What's really going on? Do you guys allow it?
You can share with us, yeah. But then we're closing the floor for public testimony. I know the biggest thing we're talking about is drainage, so we'll have someone come up and address that.
Please just go ahead and set it down, and I'll, I'll zoom in on it for you.
So this is directly out past my parcel on 3108. As you can see how far the water comes up with just less than two inches of rain. That happened in 24 hours. I was sending it to my father-in-law on the east coast, going, I got your hurricane. It came to South Dakota. So that's a picture from our deck, the addition prior to Bob's house, right there. That's how much that water comes down and how quick. And it just stays there. And it just keeps getting bigger. You know that it's backed up all the way to the road, Vincent Avenue, it's backed up. It's six, eight inches deep, all the way back over there. The kid's playing it. That's a picture heading north, towards that other drainage area. That's what she's talking about. That whole land where all that curb, all the curvy waterway is, that's backs up behind that park. It's all wet. And that's how fast it fills up. Thank you for your additional time.
Thank you. Petitioner, you want to come back up and address some of the items, or staff?
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. I was just speaking with the petitioner, and they do have a neighborhood meeting scheduled for next Thursday. I know their engineer, who's on the planning commission, isn't able to actually speak to this. So the petitioner has agreed, and, and we think it might be best to defer this one month, let them have their neighborhood meeting. Aaron from, from Aaron Norman Engineering can be there to kind of discuss some of the drainage things. And then actually, next month, we can hopefully maybe even get a drainage engineer from the city to kind of talk about the other stuff. So he's, he's agreed to that, and so he's okay with deferring the preliminary plan and then the rezoning, so.
I was going to ask that question, if he could come and speak or not, so thanks for clarifying that.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make the motion to defer this item, based on Jason's description of what we should do next with it.
To next month's meeting?
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer to next month's meeting? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, do we need to name the date for the record? For that motion?
Do we need the date for the next meeting? To be on there, or just next month?
Next month, okay. I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I'm glad we heard from all the public members here. We thank you very much for the input. It really does help us a great deal, and it's good to get that input there. Coming up in a month after they've had the public meeting, hopefully some of you can come back and tell us what's your perspective of that meeting and how it went. That would be helpful to us as well. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Pass, or defer to next month? Denise, read the next item on the regular agenda.
Item 5A, Petition 10951, 2019, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and the O Office Districts to the CN Conservation RA2 Apartment Residential, moderate-density RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and the RD2- and the RD-two town home residential suburban districts located at Thirty-Fourth Street and Career Avenue.
Item five A is a rezone for the parcel that we just discussed, so we'd like to have that deferred as well.
Look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer item five A to the next month's meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer to next month. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Defer to next month. Denise, can you read the next item on the regular agenda?
Item five B. Petition one zero four eight seven, twenty nineteen, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment located within five hundred feet of sensitive land use located at Thirteen Twelve West Twelfth Street.
Good evening. Adam Roach, Planning and Development Services. Item five B is for on-sale alcohol at the former Bob's Chicken. The applicant is Dale Dockler. It's a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within five hundred feet of a sensitive land use. The applicant is proposing a casino with on-sale alcohol. The general location is Thirteen Twelve West Twelfth Street. The area site is approximately point-two-eight acres. There are sensitive land uses adjacent to this property, three existing single-family homes above the property to the north. Public agencies and infrastructure comments. Zoning a level-C buffer yard is required adjacent to DD forms for the proposed addition. And a change of use is required with the Planning and Development Services if the proposed use is approved. Land use and comprehensive plan analysis. West Twelfth is a commercial corridor with numerous other on-sale alcoholic beverage establishments in the area. Staff have fielded several calls from the neighboring property owners whom have concerns about the proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment. These concerns were related to the applicant, and staff strongly suggested to hold a neighborhood meeting. That meeting was held July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, with approximately ten neighbors in attendance. Neighbors feel there is an undue saturation of alcohol establishments along the corridor and within the vicinity of the site. Concerns amongst neighbors include the number of police calls and arrests within five hundred feet of existing alcohol establishments in the area, litter, noise, hours of operation, safety of families that live adjacent to the proposed site. Since the last planning commission meeting, the applicant has installed concrete barriers to the north side of the site. Since, I'm sorry, has installed the concrete barriers, which would inhibit cars from creeping over the north ledge, which was one of the concerns of the neighbors. Staff feel additional elements would be provided, such as a greater setback from the north property line to eliminate parking in the back and add additional landscaping to the site. Since these elements have not been provided, staff cannot support the conditional use permit application. However, I did have a conversation with the applicant, and I do think they have some updates for the planning commission body of some concessions that they feel that they can make that would satisfy some of the neighbor concerns. Before we had those initial conversations, the site did not adequately provide a buffer from the proposed on-sale alcohol establishment to existing single-family residential uses to the north. And also, as a part of the recommendations that we have, and one of the conditions that should be stipulated, if this is approved, a security management plan is required prior to issuance of an alcohol license. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thanks, Adam. Commissioners, any questions for Adam?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Adam, in the report, it talks about the on-sale alcohol establishment must have parking spaces within the onsite parking lot in close proximity and facing the entrance. Is that one of the issues that you're most concerned about?
I think one of the issues is people congregating behind the back of the building. There's thirty-two feet from the back of the building to that property line. And if they were to provide a level-C buffer yard within that area, you wouldn't be able to drive cars or essentially congregate back there. It wouldn't really be a usable space, but it would be green space. So it would provide an appropriate buffer.
Okay, thank you.
So there would be no parking or cars going through, so.
Any other questions for Adam? Thank you. Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
John Sweets, Nine-O-One South of Van Epp's Avenue. One of the planners to the project here. Just a couple of things, kind of adding to what he spoke about here was, I think there's some renderings we've got of what the building will look like. And I think we kind of indicated there that, you know, some of the concerns that they brought up. And I think overall, you know, definitely willing to work with and want to work with individuals, neighbors, to make sure that everybody feels safe and comfortable. And so as we go through this process, you know, trying to hear what their concerns would be, whether it's, you know, I think one of the concerns is a car going off the edge. So then we, you know, essentially find a way to prohibit or inhibit that from happening. So as we go, and kind of the frustration I think we're dealing with is continuing things to come up here. But essentially, what we've got here is, if we look to the back there, a concrete wall that stops, which has been installed. Additionally to that, we had the fence, which was privatized as far as putting the blocker, so you couldn't see through that additionally. What I'd like to...
If you just scroll down.
Oh, okay, they're on the same one there, okay. Thought we were clicking. Just some more views of it. And what we'd like to point out essentially too is the fact that, you know, this building has been vacant a long time. It's been vacant over a year. I think we talked in the last meeting, it's across the street. It's been vacant since its inception, two thousand and eleven. So we're kind of stuck with a building here that's got a land use. It's very difficult to use. It's a small plot of land. Tearing the old building down and putting up a new one makes it very difficult to even meet any new requirements for any type of a building. So trying to work with them to make sure that we meet these conditions for approval. So we kind of see these here. That makes sense to everyone. Okay, here's essentially the block wall that was put up in an attempt to kind of prevent this fear of cars going over the edge being there. Additionally, the slats that are put here to privatize the area. Kind of see how high the slats are in comparison to the house there. As far as being able to see from the windows, looks like here, up and above and beyond that, with a six-foot fence is difficult. Additionally, we were, he was talking previously about the distance from the back of the building here to the property line being thirty-two feet, which we'll talk about here in just a second. And this was that vacant building that was across the street that has been vacant since inception. So my fear, just in general with this entire thing, is this brand-new, nice building has been sitting empty and vacant. And if we can't find a decent use, profitable use for this commercial building, essentially, I don't know what stops this from being vacant for a much longer time, which would create issues bigger than that. But essentially, when we look at all the issues that were brought up in comparison, he was talking about noise, security, crime rate, litter, noise, all these different things. We kind of, I'd like to boil it all down to what ones have, I don't want to say merit, because I don't want to discredit anybody's concerns, but the issue is this buffer zone. Legally, if we were to build a new one in a new part of town, there is an established buffer zone that we have to meet, and the max of that would be thirty feet. Now, and like I said, I really want everybody to hear me. I do not discredit anybody's concerns, noise, security, all of these things. I don't want to discredit that. But if we were to build a new one, we would have to have thirty feet of a buffer zone, have to. Well, we do have thirty-two feet from this. Now, we can essentially establish, and we are willing to, if we were made to, if it was, if it said this has to be done, we are willing to give thirty feet of our thirty-two feet, and we will make that a buffer zone however we need to. We're willing to do that, which we would meet then a code for everything brand-new, which would inhibit any parking from the back. There's absolutely no parking could be, because it only leaves just but a walkway. So what we're trying to struggle, potentially struggle with is trying to get some type of compromise between the two. Now, if there's absolutely no compromise, because like I said, the only issue we see here essentially is this buffer zone. If we cannot meet a compromise, then we are willing to and will do the entire thirty feet to make that a buffer zone. And then it's a non-issue, because that's exactly what would happen in any new construction project. However, if we can come up with some type of compromise, whether it's increasing the fence size, then we would prefer to do that. However, our concern has been getting, you know, what can we do to solve this problem is what the current concern has been. So we do want that to be known, that we will, we are willing to do the entire thirty feet to cut that off and give the entire thirty feet back of the property to be the buffer zone, which then, I'm not sure how it could be denied simply because we're meeting the requirement of what a brand-new construction would be and all the requirements therein. But would like to potentially see some type of compromise, which we've tried to do with blocks, tried to do with privacy fence, tried to do with talking. And essentially, we believe it's a little unorthodox to begin with because you do have a twenty-foot retaining wall on the other side of this fence. So there is no direct access between any of the residential properties that are of concern, the three and the property itself. So that kind of creates a natural buffer zone anyway. But however, if that's not considered a portion, if the land is not considered a portion, if the block is not considered, I'm sorry, the fence is not considered, if the wall is not considered, if the blocks are not considered, we are willing to do the entire thirty-foot buffer zone, which would be essentially the requirements of a new construction.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant, commissioners? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? State your name and address for the record.
I'm Terrence Mobley. I live at One Three-O-Nine West Eleventh. I'm the house with the trees. That's exactly where I'm at. If you can zoom in on that. If you look closely at that plaque part, it's not completed. It's blank, right where my tree line is. The zoning is very clear. Existing property line structures do not count for a buffer yard. That fence won't count. You guys came to us, said, "Get together. Figure out what you want." We did that. None of us want this. We have twenty-two conditional use permits within a mile of that property. Go two miles, thirty-four. We have more alcohol in this neighborhood than anywhere else in the city, including downtown. The applicant says people spend maybe an hour at these establishments. I'm a Lyft driver. Every night, I pick up drunks from casinos. Every night. Yesterday, today, Argus Leader, some dude crashed through the ceiling of a casino. Cops weren't even looking for him until he fell through. Where's the comprehensive security plan that's required? Where are you guys at, at finally saying, when the communities around these establishments are suffering, we're not going to let alcohol in anymore? You can do it. You have the right to deny on-sale alcohol. Can't regulate a casino. Casinos are not a right. They are a revocable privilege, according to the state. He has no right to operate a casino. Nobody does. That's reserved to the state. We're saying we have too much alcohol. We're saying our kids in this neighborhood are in danger. There isn't a night that goes by, I don't see impaired drivers on our side streets. Throw in a Denny Sanford event, and it triples. It triples. What's it going to take? How many of our kids do we have to lose? Look at the recent news. There's not a week that goes by that there's not an alcohol-related accident in our town. Our state leads the nation in alcohol-related arrest. That's not a one-off. That's the past decade. It's time that we stop doing this to our kids. The buffer yard, thirty feet, fine. That's what the zone says we have to have. That privacy fence doesn't count. That's the property line. The retaining wall is the property line. My trees, property line. None of that counts. That's our zoning laws. It's not my fault. He didn't ask questions before he bought the property. It's not my neighbors. It's not the kids on my street. It's not the young family across from me who just had their first baby. It's not the grandma down the street from me who lets her kids play in the street. It's not the church who's opening up a daycare. How many more of our kids are we going to allow to be impacted by impaired drivers on that street? People fly down it every night. Mitch, June, and I sit on our front porches. There's not a night goes by that somebody's not scraping the bottom of their oil pans on that little tiny drainage colt. We've asked for the speed limit to be decreased. Nothing's getting done. We're asking the cops to be a little bit more vigilant. They've actually started doing it. They're not just flying down Twelfth Street anymore. They're curving off. Look at the arrest rates in this area, guys. Something's got to happen. Whittaker, nobody paid attention to it until the commercial businesses started yelling. Guess what's coming next? Those two gas stations, frying pan, Fu Quan, they're all going to start getting upset. We just got a grocery store across the street in that vacant building? Hey, how long do you think he's going to stay there if he can't operate safely? These are the type of things that we're looking at. We've all made an investment in this neighborhood. It's one of the oldest in the city. Do you guys really want another Whittaker? Because that's what's going to happen. We have a one-and-a-half percent increase in service calls to the police department year after year. We've shared you the numbers. We've given you everything you need to legally, justifiably, deny this application. We've convinced your staff, and I hope we convince you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
I have a question for the speaker. Specifically, in regards to the buffer area, what is the biggest concern that you have? Is it noise? Is it trash? Is it an issue with a car possibly running through the fence? What's the paramount issue with the buffer in your eyes?
All of this. The paramount issue we have is this was a half-baked plan. We were told casino was the last option on the table. Didn't want it. Doesn't like drugs. Well then, why are you opening up an alcohol establishment? If you don't like drugs, if you don't like gambling, why are you going into that business? Be honest with us. We'll work with you. We'll support you. Don't try and pull the wool over our eyes. We might be low-income. We might be the bottom of middle-income, but everybody in that neighborhood's been there for a couple of years now. I'm hitting five years in my house. We've got somebody here who's been there all her life, in the same house. That's thrilling. It's all of it. We've got too much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? State your name and address for the record.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name's Mitchell Onsted. My fiance and I live at the house, Thirteen-O-seven West Eleventh, where Terrence is neighbor. I spoke last month as well. I'm not quite as beautiful as I was then, but I hope you all had a chance to see the presentation I put forth and some of the stats that I said. Quite frankly, we're here to answer the same question. Does this location make sense for an on-sale alcohol establishment? My stance is still no. One of the last things that was said last month at the session was respecting the rights of the property owner. I understand that one-hundred percent. And it reminded me of a story I'd like to share. When I was eighteen, I owned a ninety-eight Honda Shadow. Man, or ninety-eight Honda Accord. Man, that thing was clean. It was black, nice rims, sunroof, leather interior. And you better believe, the first thing I did when I owned that car was go get my windows tinted. Now, when I showed up at Audio Playground, I was asked, "How dark do I want my windows to be tinted?" I said, "How dark will you go?" They did it. I quickly realized a few months later that I had asked the wrong question when a police officer pulled me over and proceeded to put a gash in my window tint. See, I truly believe it is our responsibility as property owners to ask the right questions regarding our property, to get the right responses. That is not what has happened here. As Americans, as Soufarians, we need to respect the rules and the laws that we have committed to as a community. Because what is the point of having these ordinances, these rules, if we're not going to stick to them? Had the applicant asked the person who literally carries around a binder he refers to as the zoning bible, all this stuff would have been done right away. Instead, it's been three months. What was been put up is half a sound barrier, that I wouldn't really even call a sound barrier. I don't know if you're all familiar with the slats in the fence. Just some concrete blocks put there. blocks put there, nothing to satisfy a distance. Because as a community, we have established that on-sale alcohol establishments and families do not mix. It's a safety issue. That's what it is. That's why we have that rule. In a time when it's hard for people to feel safe going to Walmart, going to school, anything in their day-to-day life, the least we can do is allow them to feel safe in their home. And we have established that already. As you can tell, we've got a, quite a bit of opposition here for a neighborhood that has been underrepresented. Last, last month, I talked about how our median household income is fourteen thousand less than the average of Sioux Falls. How over thirty percent of our residents are under the age of eighteen. We deserve the same treatment as someone who can afford to have to build a house on east, west, or north or south of town. We're facing a lot of opposition, we're just asking for the same rights. The applicant faced no contest when he got his on-sale alcohol establishment approved in Brandon just last month to open up a casino there. Now, you're dealing with an establishment, a business, that's going to be open from seven to two, Monday through Sunday. Safety and soundproofing are huge, especially when you have houses right there. The paltry excuse for a sound barrier is not adequate. The applicant, instead of working with us, instead of from the beginning, like I said last time, my very first words to the applicant when I met him on, in June, was, worst-case scenario for this property is a casino. I got led down a path of complete, I don't even want to get into it too much, but anyway, the entire parking lot that is surrounded by the building is only illuminated by two lights, so that lighting is not safe as well. So again, you have two dings, soundproofing and lighting. When you're dealing with an area that has some of the highest crime rates in town, when you're dealing with an area that has some of the most vulnerable citizens in this town, you need an adequate, more than a boilerplate client, crime management plan. That is not being provided. Again, I would challenge you ultimately, at the end of the day, to challenge you to find a neighborhood that has been, that is, that is younger, that has been more disenfranchised than ours. And all, all we're asking, as a neighborhood, as a community, is respect the rules that we have in place and please enforce them. And please, as applicant, yeah, please enforce them. That's all I want to say. Um, I, I have a petition that's been signed by ten more neighbors within probably, I would say, a half-mile of the location, added to, I believe I had twenty-three last month. Yeah, that's, uh, that's all I got to say about that, to quote Forrest Gump.
Thanks for your passion.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that'd like to address this item? State your name and address for the record.
Kevin Kroger, five-nineteen North Prairie Avenue. Um, I'm also a friend of the owner of the building. Um, I appreciate your passion. Um, as a recovering alcoholic with ten years sobriety, father, bi- like father as an alcoholic, I've been around alcohol. I get it. I don't like alcohol either. However, that's not the commissioner's job to help be the moral police. Um, it's to find a use for the building, see if we can make it work for everybody, improve our community. Right now, the building sits vacant, across from the Knights Inn. If we don't allow on-sale alcohol, that same community, still drinking. The Knights Inn is going to walk to come and go, walk to get and go, get their booze, whatever, it's not going to change it. They're worried about congregation, I guess, and I've never seen a casino where people hang out and congregate. Mr. Dockler has invested a large sum of money into the community. Not to buy a casino, per se, but he bought into our, through community, into your community, my community, I have six blocks from there, I'm right by Ken's corner. Um, I hate the crime rate in our laborers. By adding a facility that has opened from seven AM to two P- two AM, seven days a week, you actually decrease the crime, surprisingly, because there's now awareness, and there's a building that's supervised. Um, I was going to get the stats, I was, I started looking at them today, because I just heard about this. Um, they significantly drop, because now there's somebody there. There's an empty lot there right now. That's, looks horrible. Um, Bob's Cafe is gone. That sucks. I love that place, I do their, I did business with them. Um, but Dale didn't cause that. Ben that owned it caused it when he moved it, called it Cluckin' Chicken and moved it away, because the building was not big enough to serve as a cafe. I guess I look at it, those things, um, and also having a construction background with my family owning BHI Construction, um, I understand where everybody's coming from. Um, there are improved improvements on the property that they're looking for, the lights. Um, I think those type of things, Mr. Dockler would be happy to do, with the understanding that he got the, the variance. It's hard to ask a man, when he spends a hundred and fifty thousand dollars already, to spend another fifty thousand on the possibilities that you're going to do it. Um, but yeah, the alcohol thing, I get it. I mean, I live in this neighborhood. But there's, I can't help it, I don't like casinos, honestly, that, those things. But I don't get to regulate it, it's a free business, and that property is bringing down the property values of the neighborhood. Um, I know Mr. Dockler well, and he's, he's just like us, in a simple, simple neighborhood to begin with. Wants to do what he, what he can. I asked him if we, if you guys were concerned about loitering. I said, "What if, one night a week, you pay your staff to walk the neighborhood, make sure they pick up trash?" He said, "Okay." Um, we've worked with Sioux Merchant Patrol, talked to them. They actually have a system out there with the security where they can adjust the timing of the merchant patrols, based on when they start seeing high volumes of traffic. So not only does that help his business, it helps the neighborhood has a more increased presence. Um, so I guess I would actually look at those things. Um, I'm, I'm for it, I mean, we can get some tax revenue from the thing, instead of it sitting there empty. Because across the street, it's empty as can be too, and people from Knights Inn, if you walk those lots, you see syringes, you see bottles of beer, all kinds of things I don't want my kids to see. When there's bright lights on there and people working, nobody's going to be sitting in the back shooting up a needle. So, sorry for the overdressing, by the way. I, my mother had a funeral, had a funeral for my mother today, came right from there. So, um, I appreciate your time.
Commissioners, any questions for Kevin? Thank you. Any, anyone else in the audience like to address this item? You state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Pam Sabo, I live at three-hundred Southwest. I'm one of the people whose families live there forever. Um, couple of questions. In reference to, um, putting in the, the thirty-foot, uh, barrier, and they're going to take that back area where the built, you know, of the building, where, where are people going to park? What's the required number of parking spaces for that product, or that property? And how many of those spaces need to be for, um, wheelchair-accessible? You're taking away several pro- um, parking lot spaces by closing that back area out, which then also brings up the question, where are you going to put the snow when this, when it snows? How are you going to get rid of the snow in that area, and not just pile it up in the back somewhere and have it melt down into everybody else's property? We already have issues with flooding in that part anyway, because it's on a hill, or, you know, it, it goes downhill from, uh, south to north. So anytime we get rid of any kind of, um, grass, you know, we've had some, like, zomer changed, um, a home from a, a home with a garden and a huge lawn into a, a car lot. Our house started seeing a lot more water. We had to add additional drainage areas into that area because of the increased water. There wasn't any, um, ground area to, to absorb all that moisture. So that is definitely something to consider. Also, we've been working with the city to establish a neighborhood association. Um, so we are working, um, to get that implemented. Um, it is a process, but we do have the buy-in from the neighborhood. The picnic we had a few weeks ago was very successful. It was a pleasure to meet people of like mind that wants to see that community prosper. Um, in this town, we all know that real estate is very high. However, wages don't always, uh, equal that. So that is a very good area for people to become first-time homeowners. Now, in the last three years, I can tell you that there's at least three or four properties just in my immediate area that went from rental to homeowners. And that's huge. People who own their homes are going to take better care of their property than if they're renting it. They have, you know, they have a stake in what, what that is. I believe by, by continuing to move forward with adding additional, um, businesses that offer liquor, or casino, or whatever, in this, it's just going to lower our, our property values. And it's difficult right now. Also, um, just, I was, uh, listen, I hear sirens at, um, on the weekends quite frequently, and I'll get on my phone and open up the police app to see what's going on, make sure I don't have anybody running through my yard. Within a half an hour of each other, on Saturday evening, the first report came in at Lucky Ladies. A gentleman was getting assaulted with a bat by three other people. Okay? That's on Twelfth and Duluth. Within a half an hour, Happy Jack's, which is down where Booze Brothers is, on Western and Twelfth, they had a robbery. This is within a half an hour. The gentleman that was just up here said, you know, "Well, people aren't congregating at casinos." Um, I beg to differ. Lucky Ladies is a good example of that. If you look, as we've already indicated, casinos have the highest crime rate of any business in Sioux Falls. Everybody knows they have money, they're going to go there for robberies, they're going to go drink free beer, pa- play their, you know, things, and then leave. Within the last week, I have found two articles of clothing in my yard. I don't know whose they are, but it's like, what is that? What is that? And I mean, it's like, what are people doing when I'm sleeping? It's kind of scary. Um, also, I said the snow, okay. The first gentleman that was up here, I believe he was the contractor, he made reference to the owner being stuck with the building. Well, if you had asked the questions to begin with, you wouldn't be stuck with the building. And you cannot put that on the neighborhood, that they're stuck with the building because they did not make or ask the right questions at the time that they purchased it. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this item? If we can try to address new testimony.
Hi. I'm Dale Dockler, I do own the property. I wasn't going to say anything tonight. Um, the only problem is, this building has been here since nineteen forty-one. It has not changed in appearance. It's always been the same-sized parking lot. As far as the water and the snow, it, uh, is built for the last eighty-five years to run down, and then it goes through the street. We're also, we're talking about, this is Twelfth Street, one of the four major arteries to downtown. It's a business street. It's not a residential street. It's not my fault that these people want to buy, build, or buy a house with a thirty-foot retaining wall in their backyard. I'll be honest with you, I asked Mitchell one time, I says, "Why did you buy this house?" And I probably shouldn't be saying this, but anyway, he would, kind of told me that, "Well, the guy that started the Japanese gardens, it was his house." Well, that's great, but what does that have to do with me putting a business on Twenty-Sixth Street? We have Minnesota, Western, Forty-first Street, this is another business street. So I'm not sure why he is so surprised that we want to put a business on this street. I don't get it. And I, you know, and I thought hours and hours, if this was in my backyard, I see, I'm not seeing what they're saying about a casino. I go to casinos quite often, I own one in Brandon. It's not, I don't know what they're afraid of. They keep bringing up this alcohol. You serve them a beer, maybe two, you know? It's not a bar. It's a casino where adults come in, they have a little downtime, they relax, they play a video game. It's, I don't know, I, I just don't understand it, I guess, because I don't see the problem here at all. But, but anyway, I appreciate your time. But like I say, the building's been there since nineteen forty-one, and it's never been a problem. And so this is basically just in alcohol. I mean, I've been convinced that I need to go along with this thirty-foot, uh, thing, and I'll do that. I will. I mean, I put in this barrier because the neighborhood wanted a barrier. I do that. I put in the privacy fence, not for me. I do it for the neighbors. But, you know, and like they said, they had a meeting that I found out on the news that I was invited to. I mean, if you want to work with me, work with me. But you can't just go and say that I'm doing all this stuff wrong, but you don't want to work with me. Somebody suggested a neighborhood watch. I says, "Hey, I would support that." As soon as I said that, it was dropped, in a heartbeat, never to be brought up again that I know of. And, uh, every time they come up with something, I says, "Well, yeah, let's work with that." I, well, somebody said, "Let's meet once a month, if we have any problems, let's talk about it." Dropped, as soon as I said, "That's a great idea." You know? And, uh, I don't know, I appreciate your time. I'm sorry, but thanks.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Dale? If you want to, I've got a question, I think some other commissioners have some questions. Do you?
So, when you decided to buy the building, what were you planning to use it for?
Uh, basically, my daughter has been in the casino business for eighteen years, and we actually bought it for that reason.
Had you researched the issue with regards to conditional use before purchasing the building?
No, not at all, because this is, uh, Twelfth Street. It's a, a business area. Um, I'll be honest with you, I, I, we built one in, uh, Brandon, not a problem at all. I mean, in fact, uh, when we went for our alcohol, I didn't even get a chance to stand up and talk before they passed it. I mean, people, I wish, I wish they would come to Brandon and come into our casino and see what it's actually really like. You know, and we are in more of a residential area, uh, street than we are, it's, it's not as busy as Twelfth Street. I mean, Twelfth Street is a busy, it's a, you know, you, you, Sioux Falls did a wonderful thing downtown, where you can go almost anywhere and drink downtown. But you can't drink on the way to downtown? I don't get it. Sioux Falls is a wonderful city. I mean, downtown is a wonderful place, but yes, you can go downtown and drink. So, I don't know, I hoped I answered your question the best I could.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Um, so, question on the sound barrier and, um, what I'm also getting is lighting, too. Would you be willing to put something up a little bit thicker on that, that back fence, just to appease the neighbors?
Well, sure. I, I, this is where it's kind of been misunderstood. I am willing to work with them, a hundred and ten percent. But, you know what, you have to come and meet me halfway. The only thing I've heard is the barrier. They wanted a barrier. So I spend my money, and I put up a barrier for them. But that is the last thing I've heard. This, um, you know, I, I'm definitely willing to work with them. You know? I just, and then he, he says, "The barrier's not enough." Well, the privacy fence isn't enough? What is enough? I mean, you know, this lot is not very big. You know, it's, uh, the building's just a thousand square feet. And, um, it's just, I'm sorry, I, I had no idea any of this was ever going to come up. Because when I went around and talked to the people about the first neighborhood meeting, um, Terrence, Mitchell's next-door neighbor, he had some concerns. And, um, he was the only one that I actually talked to. I talked to Mitchell after that, I believe, or maybe before, and then I found out he had some problems with, and I saw it on the news where he was concerned about cars driving over the edge. Okay, the building's been there since nineteen forty-one, but yeah, I'll put up a barrier. So I put up the barrier. Um, I, all the other people, I did not hear one complaint at all. Just Terrence and, um, uh, Mitchell. And Mitchell, at one time, uh, said that he just assumed it wasn't a casino. Well, I wish they would come to our casino and see the way it's run. Nobody's going to come out of there drunk. If they do, we could lose our license from the state just like that. There's a list of things that the state will not tolerate. If I, if I even was to run down the lottery, this is how technical they are, I could lose my license. There's, you just, you have to run a very outstanding, I can't come and say, I can't tell you, "Go, oh, play that machine, it's a hot one." That's illegal. I can't do it, I could lose my license. And then, I just wish they'd go into a casino and actually see the way they really run, instead of living off the fears.
Would you also do, look at, uh, filing like a security management plan?
Oh, sure. Oh, the light, the lighting.
Yep, and then basically how you're going to take care of it.
On each corner of the building. What I told him is, I says, "I- What I told him is, I says, I don't wanna do anything with them lights because in the last forty, since 1941, nobody's complained about the lights. If I change them lights, they're either gonna be too bright, shining in my bedroom window, whatever. They're, I'm gonna have a problem with whatever I do there. But if the lights have been on the building probably since the last fifty, sixty years, nobody's complained about them. You know, we had a, a market right next door, probably thirty foot away that sold beer. Nobody cared. Nobody cared. I just, I don't, I think the real reason here is we, they don't want to have to tell their family that they live behind a casino. I, other than that, I have no idea why you would not want it. I don't get it. So, and then everybody brings up Lucky Lady. There's also a hundred and fifty-six other casinos in Sioux Falls, but they always bring up Lucky Lady. You know, and look at, look at the problems, and they keep saying all the, uh, crime is from a casino. Well, I've talked to officers, apartment houses is number one. Sorry, but that's just the truth. That's from the law enforcement. It's casinos, uh, it's apartment houses, uh, convenience stores, and then you get into bars, and then it's casinos. That's the truth. So, okay.
I have a, I have a question for you, Dale.
Sure.
But for obviously this conditional use permit, and, and I know you can't get your casino license to operate until you get through us.
Right.
As far as the development of your property goes physically, the interior of it, where are you at in the process? Are you, uh, as soon as you get these permits, are you ready to operate? Are you fully renovated and ready to go?
In fact, I actually went down to the city and tried to get a building permit so I could actually get going on the outside of the building. Um, you know, the, the inside we can work on in the winter, but we gotta re-site it, we got new windows. The fact, in fact, well, I shouldn't say this because I don't know what would happen to them now, but there's brand-new windows sitting in the building that I can't put up because I can't get a, uh, building permit until I determine what it's gonna be used for. But yeah, I've tried. Um, I did have the sign removed here about a week ago. I wished I would've done that the first day I bought the building. And that is because everybody knows this is Bob's Cafe. Well, no, it's not. Bob's Cafe left it over a year ago, well, probably two years. The building's been for sale for four years. And out of everybody in Sioux Falls, guess who the lucky one who bought it? You know, uh, and, and I think it's a great building. I think it can be. Right now, it's pretty tough shape. And if, if we don't do, I don't know what else we would put in it besides the casino. If we don't, and let's say we don't get approved, we can go back in six months. I, we've had two windows, the one window's cracked now. I'm gonna have to board that one up. Um, and the trash, yeah, there's a lot of trash, beer bottles, uh, whiskey bottles, you know? And I've owned the building since May. In fact, there was even a suitcase with some toy trains, you know? And yeah, the homeless are gonna move in, and they will trash the building within six months, I'm sure. And I don't wanna see that. The neighborhood shouldn't. I mean, I don't, why would you want a brand-new building on 26th Street, one of the busy streets in town? So, I'm willing to make it brand-new again.
Any other questions for Dale? Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening. You wanna state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I certainly do. My name is Sue Bird, and I have lived, uh, 300 Southwest Avenue on the corner of Eleventh and West. I am, we, we have had that home, and I live in that home, for four generations. And I had all this stuff, I was gonna say, but after listening to the two gentlemen over there, they're all, they're wrong. And I'm gonna tell you the truth. And this is not a fairy tale, it's the truth. They cannot take, there's no way out of that. Bob's driving them, I should go off onto 12th Street. I worked for Bob Lyons. I know what that little restaurant did. Probably had eight stools. He didn't have traffic that sat there, or customers that sat there for three, four hours a day. Most of it was carryout, so he didn't have a lot of traffic. But our city being, that they think they're so intelligent, sold that 12th Street, um, to make it wider. And they closed Lake Avenue. You could, used to go out the driveway at Bob's, it went down Lake. But Mr. Zomer had that street blocked, the city blocked that street, so you can't go down Lake Avenue anymore. So he's wrong there. And I just think that it's very difficult, especially when, you know, that you have to see this go on every day and every day, and things not being truthful. He didn't start out with the idea he wanted a casino. From what I understand, he was gonna have his daughter put a dress shop in there. Well, now he changed his mind. But, like I said, this has been my family home for four generations. And I, and I probably won't leave if she wanna take me out in a body bag, because I'm not selling that property. Had offers to sell it, stayed there when they widened west. Get and Go wanted to tear down their building that crossed from my house, which I look out at my bedroom window at night. And that, the city denied that. They wanted to tear it down and put in a car wash. Because the citizens on the other side of the street didn't have any way to get to 12th Street. And that's what happened when you closed Lake, or whoever closed it, City Council, I guess. But I just know that our neighborhoods are smaller than they used to be. Ours was always a special place to be. We had lovely neighbors, we had lilac bushes, we had Emerson Grade School, of which my sixtieth class reunion from Washington High School is this weekend. So that tells you how old I am. But I just think that it was always a special place. There were playgrounds for kids and all this. We have none of that. And I know that there's progress, and you can see that, but there comes a point when you have to be truthful. And that wa, and another thing is that retaining wall that he's talking about, that's brick, that fell down a few years back and had to be rebuilt. So I don't think that wall is as sound as he thinks it is if he's, if it's been there since nineteen forty-two. Cause it fell down into the house, it's, excuse me, sits on the corner and had to be rebuilt. So I think there's some issues there with the, with some items that he's talking about. But I just, just wanna say that I think a casino at Bob's would be a totally unacceptable for, for us as a neighborhood and for people that live around there that could walk there. And if there, if that property across the street is so valuable, why can't they rent what's across down the other side in that strip mall? There's buildings sitting in that strip mall that have never been used. And I asked one of the council members at the picnic last time why that was, and he didn't know, but he was gonna check it out. And we had a good response. You guys watched it on television the last time, and you said we should have a neighborhood get-together. We did. You have a church right up the street from there. If you got some drunk walking, he can't walk down Lake because it's all, it's all closed. So he's gotta come down to the alley that sits there that has the car wash, which is, uh, lickety-split. Well, then he's right next to, they're right next to my garage. And who's gonna know if they're gonna walk up, throw their clothes in the yard, or go on their merry little way? I'm not gonna sit up and watch.
We're at five minutes, over five minutes now. Is there?
No, they talked longer than I did.
We, yeah, we're.
Well, just let me finish one thing.
I'll give you thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds, okay. Well, I don't know, I don't have my notes anymore, cause I changed them all. All right. Thank you for your time, and I just wanna say that I appreciate you, um, servicing this community. You do a great job, and, um, there should be more, you know, listening to our input was very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Sue? Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address this item? Let's, uh, we're gonna make sure that we touch new topics, uh, cause we've heard repetitive topics. So as long as we stay with new information, uh, we'll allow you to keep speaking.
Hello. June Copperfield, thirteen oh seven West Eleventh Street. You might recall I'm Mitchell's fiancee. Um, instead of, you know, picking out wedding cake and centerpieces, we've been getting an education on zoning laws and crime rates in our neighborhood, but that's okay, cause this is a priority. Um, so, I would just like to bring to your attention, you know, that Dale started off with us, um, saying that he wanted to be a neighbor, he wanted to add value to our community, he wanted to be a part of our, of our community. Um, and you know, so I know we've been over the numbers. We know that, um, eighty percent, if all, um, calls, reported crime in Sioux Falls, happens in our neighborhood. Uh, we know that within five hundred feet of a casino, we have crime rates in our neighborhood that are five times higher than any surrounding area. Uh, we know that our neighborhood is oversaturated with on-sale alcohol establishments. Um, and at our neighborhood meeting that we did have, we brought this to Dale's attention, and we asked him, uh, what value, in light of, of all of this, what value his, uh, on-sale alcohol establishment was going to bring to our neighborhood? Since he wanted to be a neighbor, he wanted to be a part of our community, you bring value. Um, and he said none. He said, I guess this only benefits me. And I just wanna make sure that we, we understand that Dale is not here to, um, to help improve Pettigrew Heights. He's not here to bring any sort of, uh, goodness to the neighborhood. He's literally here just to take what money he can get from our neighbors. He's made that clear. Um, so I just wanted to, um, to let you know what I think it does look like to be a neighbor and be a member of our community. Um, I think it looks like Josh Brewer opening up a youth center in Pettigrew Heights. Uh, I think it looks like Mitchell and Nate Pruitt of Central Church, uh, putting on and hosting a neighborhood cookout and literally inviting our entire neighborhood, and feeding them, and giving them something to drink, and sending them home with leftovers, and creating a space where, where we could get together as neighbors for the first time in a long time, and talk about starting a neighborhood association, and what we wanted to see, and how we were gonna combat crime in our neighborhood, and how we were gonna grow, and how we were gonna support our children. And it looks like carving time out of your day, uh, to educate yourself on these things, and come to a very intimidating space and speak on behalf of your neighbors, that's what a community member looks like. That's what it looks like to be a neighbor. Just wanted to, to put that out there. Um, and so, moving on to things like Shape Sioux Falls 2040. Uh, we know that the property, um, the plans that are there right now does not meet the requirements. I know we talked about the buffer yard, um, and to be honest, I, I, I would like to bring up honesty. Um, you know, it, it takes integrity, you know? We have to be able to trust Dale to follow through on these things that he says he's gonna do, right? He's gonna put up this thirty-foot yard, he's gonna put up a privacy fence, these things. Um, frankly, Dale established his relationship with us with, with lies. Uh, Mitchell met him up there, uh, above our house, um, at the Old Bob's Chicken, and he asked him, hey, you know, I just wanted to come and meet you, I live below, what are you gonna do? He said, oh, I'm gonna put in a dress shop for my daughter, or we talked about a coffee shop, or listed half, half a dozen things, said the last thing we're gonna do is put a casino, you know, I don't like drunks, I can't handle it, I don't wanna do it. Well, Dale, if you can't even be honest with us about your intentions, you know? I mean, I think he made it very clear that his daughter has been in this business for eighteen years. He was literally just trying to get us to go away, right? So that he could sneak in here and he could put in this casino. Um, so even if we do, if, if this gets approved, and Dale says he's going to do these things that he says he's going to do, I quite frankly don't trust him to follow through with it. And I don't know what the protocol is for, um, enforcing these kinds of things, but I, I would wanna know a little bit more about that to make sure that Dale is gonna be held accountable on those things. Uh, but we know that, um, one Sioux Falls, Paul Tenhankin said, you know, Sioux Falls is a growing city with growing needs, and that requires a clear vision, um, and shared set of goals for success. Uh, he really outlined what those goals were. And I do believe that adding to the oversaturation of on-sale alcohol establishments in our neighborhood goes completely against any sort of safety, health, accessible housing, um, goals that have been set forth for us to improve our neighborhoods and grow in a healthy direction. I think this, approving this completely diverts from that. Ah, sorry, I know I'm running low on time here. I'd also just like to address a few of the things that were recently brought up. Um, so it's said that folks are, are not coming out of every casino drunk. I, I think then, that the crime statistics that we can literally point out on a map that show five times higher within a five-hundred-foot radius of every casino would, would speak differently. Um, he said it's not a bar, people are not gonna hang out there all day. Well, it is a bar, it's a bar on sale. You know, it's a bar with a, a clearance sale going on. Um, let's see. Dale said that we, that it was brought up that we should create some kind of crime stop, crime stoppers in our neighborhood, and that was something that we said that we weren't gonna do as soon as Dale suggested it. Well, Dale was invited to our cookout, he did not come, um, and we are very much on track to get together as a neighborhood, to establish an association, to establish all of those plans.
Okay, we're past five minutes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time. Um, and I just ask for your support to help us get our neighborhood on the right track. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? We're just gonna make sure every, um, we just don't repeat, we've heard several times about, uh, just make sure we address new stuff.
I'm Alexandra Shamay. I live at twelve twenty-one West Tenth. That's just a block up from Mitchell and their houses over there. I just wanna mention the kids, um, cause there are a ton of kids in our neighborhood. And right on, we're right on the corner of Tenth and Covell, and on Tenth, our house and across the street, and then on this Covell, there's twenty-seven kids living just in that corner. And that's not counting the kids that the other man was talking about, cause I've never met the kids on the other, on Eleventh Street. And we sit out at night and we watch the cars and the drunks walk by, meth heads walking by, there's people talking to invisible dogs. There's, I mean, there's all kinds of people right now going back and forth. Um, I don't let my daughter go to the car by herself at night. Um, we've found syringes on the boulevard. I mean, it's, it's not great, and the only thing I can keep thinking of is why a casino? Why a video lottery? Why, it's, you know, small local business, fantastic, we'd support it a hundred percent. Coffee shop, dress shop, whatever, you know, candy shop, anything but a video lottery casino. Because all I can think of is that's just gonna bring more drunk people walking by, more people on, we've, we've had the police so many times, just on our block, and it's, it's too much. I'm wearing a knee brace because I was assaulted on August first, just a house away from our front door. But the kinda neighborhood that we live in, people talk, keep telling me, move, move, move. I don't wanna move, because we have fantastic neighbors. I'm, right now, my daughter and I are taking care of the wife of the man who assaulted me. My daughters babysat rabbits and cats for neighbors that we just met when we moved in. I mean, the community is fantastic. There's people across the street that bring food over to, you know, the disabled lady next door. There's, it's just, it's a great, great neighborhood. We, we all get along, there's people from Liberia, from different countries. It's a fantastic group of people, and we just wanna keep it that way and not have to worry about more drunk people walking around, and they will, if there's another video casino, video lottery place, because that's just what they do. And like I said, it's not, we don't have a problem with you making a business. Of course, it's gonna be a business, it's West 12th Street, like you said. But why not a different business, a coffee shop? A lot of people pay tons of money for coffee. You could, you know, have another great business that's not a casino. That's, I'm just worried about the kids. That's my, that's all, God, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Tina Welch. Um, I've been in the casino business eighteen years, and you-
And yes, I didn't know if I wanted a dress shop or a casino. Maybe I wanted to get out of the casino business. But here I am, eighteen years in the making, and we are opening a casino in Brandon. And I would want to open a casino on Twelfth Street. I have been in the business eighteen years. I've called the cops literally maybe twice. And that was just because one girl ran in and because she was assaulted nearby at a business. Sorry, I'm nervous. Anyways, we all have TAM certifications. Every employee that works in the casino business is certified through TAM, which means that they have been trained to cut people off, who to call, what to feed them, so they're not intoxicated. And honestly, if a person is intoxicated coming into a casino, they will not leave intoxicated going out of a casino. They're not there all day long. They're in, spend twenty bucks and leave, basically, is what it comes down to. If they come into the casino intoxicated, then yeah, we know what to do because they're already certified TAM employees. We know who to call. We know how to call lift. And what we want to do is we want to make the neighborhood nicer. We want to put money into this building. Why would we want it to sit empty? Why? I don't understand that part at all. And what else could we put in it possibly? Bob's Cafe didn't work? Or they moved? What, it's not there? Why didn't you buy the business? Why didn't you buy?
Let's stay focused on.
Okay, but I mean, there was a reason why Bob's moved.
Let's talk about the issue.
Yeah, we're all TAM certified and basically that's it. We know what to do when we deal with alcoholics. And we know how to serve and how to cut people off. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair. Will you be able to establish a good custom-designed security management plan that can really address some of the issues that have been brought up?
Yeah, we'll be open from seven to two, three sixty-five. We'll have surveillance on the property in and out. We'll have a staff on duty that whole time, twenty hours a day. We'll have employees outside picking up trash, picking up litter, cigarette butts, whatever. Right now, there's trash everywhere in the neighborhood. The, the, half the neighborhood is empty. So why not put a profitable business in Twelfth Street? Why not? Why wouldn't you want that for your property value? I don't, I don't understand that part.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep, you want to come up? State your name and address. And I think we've heard enough. We'll close public testimony after this.
Helen Healy, two two nine South Euclid Avenue. For safety reasons, because I have a security job, I also drive Class I CDL. I go by another nickname for my safety. A lot of it's due to on-sale alcohol. Because I've worked in security, they don't have to be intoxicated to be abusive. The barriers that I saw that they put up, I appreciate that. But they've also kind of created a step to go onto the fence, to go down to the steps going down in their backyards. Anybody who's seen alcohol drug runaways trying to get away from the law, not pretty. It will happen. They already cut through our neighborhoods, through our backyards. We are Neighborhood Watch Number Eight. We have been that for many, many years. We are not as outspoken because we've had things destroyed, vehicles, et cetera. At the last meeting, the council requested that there be a, a meeting. There was a sign posted on their building. They had noticed to come to that meeting with the neighborhood potluck. I, due to health reasons, I wasn't there. My understanding is they did not show up. So there was notification. So we tried to do what you requested. At the last meeting, you requested some form of security plan to be presented or at least to be able to be looked at. It's not here. There's a light at West. There's a light at Twelfth and Grange. As you know, if you come up both of them, it's kind of a blind spot from where, yes, we call it Bob's Cafe because that's what everybody knows it as. We know it's not that anymore. People driving at that time in the night, coming off anywhere from ten o'clock or later. I come home, I've nearly been wiped out many times, various times through the night because that's when I get home. And the fast traffic that races on Eleventh Street through the night, even with the dip at Lake, doesn't slow them down. They just bottom out. The stoplights are not going to prevent accidents when they pull out. It doesn't take much alcohol to create the alcohol, the drugs and driving out or the people walking across to the nights in. There probably was something else. I can't remember. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we've closed public testimony. Commissioners, I'll look for action. Or if you want to bring staff on.
Mr. Chair, just to formally close public testimony, I'd like to make a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
Second.
So a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes. Adam, can you come up real quick, please? I don't know if you know this or who to officially ask, but Bob's Chicken did nothing when it came to alcohol, correct? They didn't sell beer or anything like that.
Been in there a few times and I do not recall alcohol.
Thank you. Further discussion on this, my, my, my take on this. We have two groups equally passionate about what they want to do. Adam, unless someone else has questions for Adam.
I, I have a question for you, Adam, and it may be for you and maybe for the city attorney. But i- in the event that this is denied tonight or at any time, what does the timeframe look like, if at all, for this applicant to bring forward this application again?
They have six months to come back. They would have to wait a six-month period.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's a thirty-foot buffer, a buffer put in between the back of the building and to that fence, will they meet the parking requirements?
We would have to look at the parking requirements. But due to the size of the building, and maybe Jason knows this off the top of his head.
We would have to look at that. I would say if it's that use, they would need, it's seventy-five square feet per parking space. So what does that get us, like ten, twelve parking spaces, maybe? We'd also have to look if they're going to rip out that asphalt back there to, to see with engineering, to make sure that it's, all those other parking spaces make, meet engineering design standards and that stuff. So this is something that the applicant had said tonight. We hadn't heard about this earlier. So otherwise, we probably would have requested a site plan of some sort. And just to follow up on Eric's question, sorry, Johnny, didn't mean to cut you off. If it's denied tonight, then it's six months they have to reapply. However, they are able to appeal it to the city council within five working days. And also, if this were approved tonight for the conditional use, that doesn't mean that the city council has to approve, one, their beer wine license and, two, their video lottery terminal's license, so.
I have a question for you, Jason. It appears that the planning staff doesn't believe that, at this point in time anyway, this particular project meets the standards for a conditional use permit. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, we believe that the, the applicant has done some steps to work towards that with putting the barriers, doing the slat fence. However, as we look at this, we still feel like there's some additional elements that need to be put on the site to give us that buffering from this use to the single family that's to the north there.
Thank you.
And what are those items?
We probably have to look at tearing out some of the asphalt to get, as Adam had indicated, we wouldn't want cars back there. Maybe looking at possibly doing, they could do up to an eight-foot fence back there. Maybe that would alleviate some of the concerns of people being able to get over the six-foot. Some additional trees would go back there. They would have shrubs, that kind of stuff, to kind of create that natural barrier and kind of keep people filtering towards Twelfth Street and not going to the north at all.
That's all I got. Any other questions? Thank you.
Sorry about that earlier, Mr. Chair. I'd like to continue at this point if there's no other desire to have staff or anyone come up. Okay, as I was saying earlier, it's a very emotional issue on both sides of this. Very passion, passionate issue for both sides of this. I, I can't get past the, the minimum standard facts. The applicant came to city staff, recommended they have a neighborhood meeting and they did. Got the feedback, didn't like what they heard. City staff talked about minimum standards for conditional use issuance. Yeah, we'll do that if we have to. I'm getting the, I get the impression with this, I'm being, I'm being sold something. Well, just tell me the minimum we have to do. Don't tell me about what, what's, what's required here. That just doesn't seem reasonable. What isn't reasonable to me is when you're coming forward for a conditional use permit, this process exists for a very specific reason. You're within X amount of feet of a sensitive use. This isn't the time to talk about, well, what can I get by with? This is talking about what can I do to exceed standards? There is also evidence in the write-up that the fire department talked about underground storage gas tanks or something to that effect, potentially working with the state to remove those in this write-up. Wasn't talked about, doesn't have to be. But these are the kind of things, if you really want to show you're going above and beyond and you want to really make an impression, at least on me, you want to, you want to do more than the minimum. It was also said that this is step one. Then it'll come an alcohol license and then it'll come the video lottery terminal license reviews. Then the security management plans have to be talked about, Commissioner Irvin's point earlier. There's just so much stuff here that has yet to be addressed. And the minimum thing was, you know, submit your plan to the city and tell us how you want to address this to, to, to meet the minimum needs of the conditional use. And that wasn't done. So for simply that, this does not have my support. This is already Zone C two to come forward and attempt to tell us that the only thing you can possibly do here to make this work for what you're doing is a casino, just bluntly and not necessarily needed for, for comment. But I'm going to do it anyway because there was quite a bit of my time taken with this testimony. It just shows a lack of imagination, in my humble opinion. So I will not be supporting this.
Mr. Chair, I concur with Commissioner Johnson. We will not be supporting this request.
Any other discussion? If not?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that this site is not ready for this conditional use permit to be approved. It is a difficult one. It is Twelfth Street and quite frankly, I think that Twelfth Street is an appropriate area, broadly speaking, for a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcohol license and a casino. You know, I'd agree with the commissioner. This, this specific site, it just has not been handled properly throughout the process. I don't like to see some of these issues being addressed vocally here. Chief among them is this, is a proper site plan, I think, with a proper setback. It's really about the buffer issue for me. And I think that's something that the applicant can maybe address in the future and maybe sway my opinion, perhaps not. Then in addition to that, an adequate security plan, it's just not there. I, I think the neighborhood has some broader issues that, that they should work and have worked with, I know with the city, whether that's the mayor's staff, the planning department, and, and the police department. And continue to work through those issues. And I don't necessarily know that this is the forum to be discussing those broader neighborhood issues. I'm more so specifically focused on the issues with this site. And for those reasons, I'll be voting against this application.
Thank you. I just want to state, you know, neighbors, thank you for getting involved and passionate. I know I kind of spoke to you right at the end. And this is what I wanted you to kind of do, is kind of engage. Because that's what we have to do in our neighborhoods. We have to engage. And sometime down the road, I mean, depending on where this goes, Dale, he owns that property. We're going to have to figure something to be a good neighbor. We have to come together and figure out how you guys can kind of not have this dividing line. You got to come together because we can't have any more division in our city. We need to work together to get stuff done. So depending on how this goes, I mean, you guys need to get together and try to fix stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know, as I hear the testimony too, I hear a lot of things about alcohol establishments and concentration in the city and the history of other alcohol establishments and crime around them. That's really not pertinent to our decision here. That's a broader issue, as Commissioner Lutke talked about. The things that we need to really consider here, is this the right situation for this land use, for this particular piece of property and this particular proposed business for a conditional use permit? I too believe that this, right now, we don't have adequate information to tell us that this actually works. A site plan would have been really helpful. I agree with that comment too. The thirty-foot buffer yard, just based upon my experience and seeing the number of spaces and knowing about how big that site is, it's going to be a challenge to get twelve spaces in there with a thirty-foot buffer yard. I think those things may be proven at some later date. But right now, I don't see it there to be able to approve this with good conscience.
Mr. Chair, just to add, I agree with Commissioner Irvin. And then I'd also like to echo what you said. This is the second time in my tenure as a commissioner that I've seen a neighborhood come together based on a rezoning or a conditional use permit to form a neighborhood association. And so I hope that even after this issue passes, that you will continue the neighborhood association to improve your neighborhood and to, to support each other. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
This item is denied. Denise, can you read the next item on the regular agenda?
Item five C, petition one zero five one five, twenty nineteen, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment located within five hundred feet of a sensitive land use located at fifty five oh three North Cliff Avenue.
Good evening. Item five C is a North Cliff Avenue Casino and Sea Store. The applicant is Belay Abibi. For a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within five hundred feet of a sensitive land use. Sorry, physical address fifty five oh three North Cliff Avenue. Site size approximately point seven four acres. The applicant is proposing to remodel a previous gas station into a multi-tenant building. One of the tenants will be a sea store and the other one will be a casino. There are sensitive land uses adjacent to this property. The uses need to be separated by a reasonable distance from certain incompatible uses. There are four existing single-family homes abutting in this property. In the concept plan, we have a new updated site plan. It's been updated since the last meeting. It does indicate appropriate setbacks. It does indicate appropriate setbacks from all property lines. A 30-foot setback is adjacent to residential, and the new addition triggers a 10-foot buffer yard in the front yard there. The site plan also demonstrates driveway accesses closing. Two out of the four accesses would close as per our engineering department. Parking is required at one space for every 200 square feet of total parking, so 15 spaces are required, they're providing 17. And the propos... Also, there's a lot of vehicle cut-through on the backside due to the median on North Cliff Avenue here, and the elimination of these access easements in the implementation of a buffer yard in the rear would eliminate that cut-through traffic in the back, and it all would also eliminate, we've heard cars like to park here due to the building that is vacant. In terms of a buffer yard, if the proposed addition is more than 20% of the building, a level-C buffer yard is required, and it is shown and demonstrated here. The applicant will provide a security management plan as required prior to issuance of an alcohol license and a change of uses required with our planning and development services. Land use and comprehensive plan analysis, the proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment is providing the adequate measures to mitigate land use conflicts amongst existing land uses in the immediate area as per the city's comprehensive plan. After further review, discussion and modifications to the previous site plans, staff concerns have been alleviated, and the applicant is providing the required landscaped level-C buffer yard. The applicant has made great strides and demonstrated community stewardship by hosting a neighborhood meeting with the neighboring properties and his willingness to adhere to the city's adopted community standards. If the conditional use permit is approved, the applicant can apply for his beer/wine license and video lottery terminals licenses through the city council. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit as the applicant's proposal meets or exceeds community standards as outlined by the city's comprehensive plan and has taken appropriate and proactive steps that include hosting a neighborhood meeting and providing a site plan which includes the buffer yards, details, and access closures that meet or exceed the city's standards. And with that, I will open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Adam.
Mr. Chair? Adam, you said in your commentary that two of the four accesses are closed. I see in the site plan, it looks like they still have three of the four.
Sure, yep.
Could you explain?
I met with the applicant last Thursday and indicated that one of these needed to be closed, and then he met again with their engineering department on Friday, and we just haven't received an updated site plan since then. But the southeast access will be closed here.
It's the one in the middle of the three?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Adam? Thanks, Adam. Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Balay.
You want to pull that a little closer?
My name is Balay. Last name Alpeva, 7616 Stony Creek, Seafalls. As you remember, August 7, our petition was deferred for two reasons. Number one, to meet the neighbors, and the second one was to make a site plan which is meet engineering and the design standard. And I did send letters to the neighbors, and on the sites, some never show up early. Six of them came on planned time, and I heard their concern, and I showed the plan to them, and their concern was, some of them, they told me, really, it is a great welcome, because the place was very neglect, abandoned, and some people used it as a rest area, and they don't know who is parking for how long and what the hell they do over there. Now, they feel somebody will take care, and they know who will be responsible either. So I heard some of the neighbors, it is very good, it is a great welcome, they told me, and they left. Some, they have a safety concern, and we heard their concern, and we took consult for that. Their concern was safety. Neighbors raised concern about our security with the new business. We reassured neighbors again, our priority is really safety, not only for them, even for us and for customers, obviously for them also. So we'll take any necessary steps, surveillance cameras and patrols, and we'll have a good, I have still now, I have a good relationship with the police, and still I am keeping. So that is my first priority, to, to create a peaceful business atmosphere. So I will reassure that will happen again. That is about safety, and we offered fans to screen if they need, but neighbors declined. One of the backside neighbors said, you see, already it is screened with plants, so we don't need. The other side, he don't want that, the fence, maybe, I respect his wish, so maybe I'll put plants when the landscape is done, in the long term, you will be covered. So that was the meeting. In the meeting, really, I took my wife and my kids to show them who will be their neighbors. That is about the neighbors. About the plan, really, we worked with staff, with planner Adam, really, I appreciate him for his time. He been on the spot and showed me what the city requirements, everything, and we did that plan, and the parking, the entrance, everything, and the buffering zone, and the landscape, everything, what development will be, we agreed it, and I submitted new design. So everything seems okay. That is what we are wishing, that is very unpopulated area, the edge of the city, it takes, it will really have a tough challenge for us to build and to attract customers. I just want to let you know, it is not easy to do kind of things. I've been, I started 15 years ago, a business with one chef. The reason I do that, really, I want my kids get a nice future, better than me. Thank you. Do you have questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience that'd like to address this issue? State your name and address for the record, please.
Ken Kirby, 5505 North Cliff, just north of where the gentleman is talking about. Yeah, I'm definitely against it. I don't want a casino right next to my house. I got grandchildren, great-grandchildren, you know, and my neighbor next to me north, I'm speaking for him too, Jeff Moore, because he got two children, two years old, twins, and he doesn't want that either. And... Trying to think of a nice way to say this, but, you know, he came here in July for this first meeting, and it was deferred, and the planning commission had told him to have a meeting, neighborhood meeting. We came here in August, it was deferred, I have no idea why. He did have a neighborhood meeting a couple, three weeks ago, I can't tell you exactly what day, and there was, I'm gonna say 12, roughly 12 people there, 12 neighbors there, and there wasn't one in favor. Now, we don't have nothing against the gentleman, we want him to succeed in his business, whatever the case may be, you know, he's at a convenience store, or there used to be a convenience store there, there used to be an off-sale liquor store there, and I guess that was fine, because people came and left. Nobody came to sit down and just stay there for a while. And I, that's my biggest problem, that is, we're gonna have people coming in, staying there, you know, and I got my kid, excuse me, I got kids running around, I'm not, I just don't feel good about it. And that was Jeff's same issue. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this issue? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Behrens, I live at 5412 North French Avenue, kind of northwest of this property. I would, I'm here to ask the board to deny that because of the fact, previous times, we've had alcohol there, and there's been problems with it. Normally have a really nice, quiet neighborhood. Our neighbors are all seniors, most of our seniors, very few young families there. We'd like to see, see it stay safe and without having any police department or anything else come through for some abnormal reason. We also are in fighting against trash, the businesses that were there before had a lot of trash flying in the air. We all built buffers so we could eliminate the trash coming from that business. We all want something there, we don't want it to be empty, but we would like to also have something appropriate that would be approved by each one of you to make the benefit for everybody as well. Going into the station and coming into that building, the highway department, the city's, state highway department made access to make that U-turn, and they told us that that riser was gonna be put there, it's so that they could turn into that building, that lot, and pull through and go out. And I'm glad that he's gonna close off the one driveway, that makes sense to me, but the other driveway, and having the access going out is good, but not, and I see he's gonna want to close the other one in the back there, which is a good idea, that's a very good idea. But for what he wants to do with the property, we do not want as a neighborhood. All my neighbors are all seniors, they're all on Bed-Beta Clock, you know, and so with that concern, we're very concerned about the noise and whatever else that happens with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for David? Thank you, David. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this issue? We'll wait until... Anyone else that'd like to address this issue?
Thank you to allow me to speak. My name is Kader Uwera, I'm supporting the gentleman in front of you. I apologize, last time I was there, I said we're gonna have a neighborhood meeting, and he called the meeting, and suddenly I have something emergency and be out of town, I didn't able to attend that. What I'd like to say to this issue is very different. I respect, like last time I said, the neighbor concern, but all the time, when we have a concern, we stopping somebody to start a new life in a business, city and your job is to look in the rule and regulation, what is required and what we follow to prove those requirement to have a business. The neighbor around this business, and if you look in the building, none of them, none of those neighbors facing the businesses to walk from the business or come through the business, or the customer coming to this business drive from their house or coming from their street, it is not. Every neighbor in there, except one in the northeast of it, facing the street. Every other neighbor, their driveway and their houses and their door in other size, about 500, 600 feet away from the establishment business situation. So to me, I know, we all concerned about our grandkids. I got four beautiful grandkids, I want to protect them. It's my job to protect them, not my job to tell other people, it's not open a business because I have grandparents in there. That's one. Second, it's important, we understand, the gentleman worked very hard to put this business together, and he requesting from city staff whatever is they feel is proper to follow the rule and regulation, he gonna do it. And he already blocked two drive-throughs, this way the people, the people is coming to his establishment, not coming close to the neighborhood, coming straight from the freeway and ride to the business. So I encourage you guys to have an open mind of the situation, and I know these gentlemen work very hard, and he have a business already in 11th Street and never been violated the rule or regulation or complaining against him. That's very important for you as a city, as a commissioner to know. He have a business like that, and he never have a violation, the rule and regulation. And I know, and again, I totally respect the neighborhood concern, but again, it's way distant between those houses and the establishment in there. So I encourage you to support the situation, because he gonna follow up, and we gonna follow up with every concern the neighborhood, and make sure not be establishment like some people, just like I had another issue, casino, casino, casino is gonna be a big... My gosh, we selling alcohol every corner of City of Sioux Falls, okay? And those people is against the casino, most of them, they drink alcohol themselves, but they against to alcohol being sold in neighborhood, where they drink alcohol. And I, what, 70% people in this country drink alcohol? Okay, so we can't just stop the businesses, because close to our house, but it's okay, I go in there and bring alcohol in my house and my neighborhood have a drinking party. So again, I encourage you to follow the rule and regulation and what he done to complete the requirement of city planning, and I encourage you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this issue? If not, we'll close public testimony and allow the petitioner to come back up, and you wanted to speak still, or...
I just Googled, and I see public record, the neighbor who is next to me, he bought that building in 1995, and that, the, the, the store was at that time a liquor store in that gas station. So they know the building, just I'll tell you for your judgment, that building is built in 1967. All the neighbors, especially the one who is, the, in northeast area, he bought the building in 1995 and entered there. He knows the liquor store will be his neighbor. So I bought the commercial building, and it is zoned, I am not asking zoning, it is really C2 zoned, and it is really very undeveloped area. The front side is empty, the only thing, there is a camper, and in that camper place also, there is a beer sale and alcohol, that doesn't bring to them any problem. So just, I'm telling you to your judgment, to assess the picture of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Could you comment about the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, sir.
Tell us more about what you heard from the people who were there.
Okay, there is two kind of, some people, they passed by, they know that the meeting was, they don't want to be really there, they told me it is welcome, great, that place was just like a restroom, and they don't know who is parking there and how long they stay there. So now we know minimum somebody is doing and take care and take responsibility also. That is what they told me, it's one side. The other side, they worry about the safety, I mean, that is, every time we heard that about crime, violence, casino brings that. But in my idea, violence and crime is not the business bring. Any business doesn't bring that one. The violence and crime is planted in our heart, and the people, they do violence and crime. In Seafalls, 5,000 violence and crime... In Seaford, five thousand violence and crime policy report shows. And number one is homicide violence. It is not a business. The business, they run their business, sometimes they are victim and they do, they follow regulation, they give service. But the neighborhood who has bad customers, they are the problem, uh, they are who bring problems to the business. So it, it is, I've been, uh, in liquor store business for fifteen years. I know if the community has some toxicated problems, those prob- those customers, they bring problems, but not the business bring problems to them. Selling alcohol, have casino, it is legal issue. It is not, just everybody licensed it and every business runs legal business. So I don't know what some people have, just as if number one problem is liquor store, carcass, it is not that. Theft in Seaford is number two, car theft. Who do, who did that? Not the stores or not the business, the people, but people everywhere. Violence have in Walmart, violence have in park place, violence have in school. We see that everyday news. That is not because the business bring to the community, no. A city without business means a cemetery, no life at all. So I believe I'm running, um, very nice business. I give service. I, I will take care of the customers and I will take care of obviously neighbors. That is my, I know what is my responsibility and what is I have to do. You know what I mean? Just not only making money, no. I will do ma- I will try to make money with ethics, with eth- business ethics. That's how I am. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any question? Okay.
Would you be open to, um, filing a security management plan?
Yes, sir.
For the city?
That is, I told, I, I tried to explain early. The first victims would be we, the people who are working there. So we put surveillance camera and still I have experience. I worked with the police people and I have a good contact with them. And I vigilant and survey the neighbors also. If I see some suspicious, some thing is wrong, I'll call the police to distance all these problems from the area. So there is no way they will get even problems because the store position is just like this. They are behind. If the problem comes right there to the stores, not to them, there is no way. It is one way and there is no back way even the people go to them. So absolutely it is a really good business location. That's it. Is there any question? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. One more question for you.
One last question. Are you gonna sell fuel at your location? Gasoline, diesel? Are you gonna sell fuel?
No, we don't have gasoline. The tanker is, it is out already.
Okay.
So what I have a plan is we have a shield, this is still I am keeping, the shield is to make a nice small picnic area for summer. The neighbors, they come with kids, sit down there, have hot dog and ice creams, all that things. I try to make nice, beautiful. That's my plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will look for motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve with the following conditions. Number one, that the applicant provides an updated site plan showing the southeast access point closed. And number two, that they file a security management plan with the city.
Second.
So a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Sounds, Mr. Chair, it sounds like a, a great, um, concept. Taking what had been a gasoline C-store fuel station and keeping a C-store element to it. The casino elements with the conditional use, um, have been addressed. And, um, I think the, um, element of the security plan would also be addressed at the point where filing for, uh, the alcohol license and the video lottery terminals as well. But, uh, good to just have it noted for the, for the record here. So I'm in favor of this one.
Mr. Chair, I think, uh, they've done a good job of addressing some of the neighborhood, some of the neighborhood concerns certainly. Uh, the drive around road, eliminating that, adding the buffer yards as, uh, we require, as well as closing some of the entrances, uh, to the lot. That all makes a lot of sense. Uh, and it's always good to see a, uh, a disused piece of property brought back online so that, uh, you know, nobody wants to be adjacent to an unused piece of property that's been sitting vacant for a long time. I've dealt with that before in the past and I know it's always better to have somebody occupying those things. So I'm also in support of this one.
And Mr. Chair, I just wanna add, um, this, the, what was submitted for this, uh, meeting was, um, a long ways away from when it, where it was in July. So I just also wanted to commend, um, Adam. You've had a couple of really challenging, uh, applications. And so thank you for working with applicant on this particular, uh, property.
Any other discussion?
I wanted to say thank you too. I know when we first got this, I mean, it, it, we really couldn't make a clear decision on what to do and you guys worked together and glad that this, you know, that's what happens when city and applicant and neighbors work together is we can kinda address concerns that neighbors have and then also work with the applicant to make it, you know, what the, to the public, what's, what's gonna go there. So I appreciate that. And thanks neighbors for coming here and voicing your concerns. Appreciate that.
On that, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Denise?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself on the next item.
Thank you.
Item five D, petition one zero six six nine twenty nineteen. Conditional use permit for required parking within two hundred and fifty feet for use located at twelve oh one South Seventh Avenue.
Commission, Albert Schmidt, planning and zoning again. Um, so this application, as you may remember, it was deferred from last month. So I'll be pretty brief on this one since we've heard it once. Owner applicant, John Cook, also applicant tied in with Vera McKinnon due to the parking location being on their property. It's conditional use for locating parking off the property, but within two hundred feet, two hundred fifty, sorry. The general location of this property is at twelve oh one South Seventh Avenue. The biggest thing that we have, um, from a staff comment, from, from traffic, that if a new pedestrian curb ramp is installed, engineering will stripe the area between Seventh Avenue and the new, the two curb ramps. Staff is recommending approval with the two conditions. One, that an ADA ramp be installed directly east of the southwest corner of Seventh Avenue and East Twentieth Street. As you can kinda see on our pictures here, where they're showing those, these locations, bottom left-hand corner, straight ahead. And number two, that signs are placed directly in front of the off-site parking spaces to identify the three parking spaces that should be reserved for twelve oh one South Seventh Avenue.
Any questions for Albert? Thanks, Albert. Is the applicant here? There he is. Come up and state your name and address for the record.
John Cook, one eighteen West Nineteenth Street. And this, uh, this property, to give you a quick summary, was set to get demolished about four or five years ago. And I got to know, um, Tom Bosch, who was here for another thing, I think, a little bit later. And, uh, we worked together over, uh, a couple of years, came to an agreement. We made a donation to the foundation and we were able to start restoring this property, which we've been working on for eleven months. And, uh, it's a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. It's got, uh, three units currently and we're just talking about this one studio, um, that we're looking to get this additional parking spot from. I am working directly with Tom Bosch and the crew over there and it's a great relationship. This place is gonna house, um, people awaiting transplants at the hospital and it's also gonna most likely house, uh, staff. It's just right on the front steps of the ER. So I think this is a perfect use for the neighborhood. The neighbors have come over, everyone's really excited. There's been a, uh, a lot of positive feedback to all of our workers and everyone that's been there. So I think all around, I think it's a, a great story. I think it's gonna be a great addition to the neighborhood and serve a, a wonderful need. Um, and, and they're all furnished units. Uh, they're all really tastefully done. In fact, we already got occupancy permits for the main house. So we just had to finish the studio. And I think it's gonna be a real comfortable place for people awaiting a real stressful time in their life. And, uh, yeah, I've enjoyed working with Vera and hopefully we get this approved.
Any questions for John? Thanks, John. Anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, I will look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item five D.
Second.
So we have, have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Very commendable use and, uh, glad to see it being retasked as opposed to potential tear down or whatever other plans were.
I'd like to say thank you, John, for what you're doing in the central part of the, the city. I know you're very passionate about going in and fixing up and restoring buildings that probably should have been tore down. Um, so thank you for that.
I guess I have a clarification. Are we approving this as those recommendations need to be in the motion for conditions? With the motion?
I would recommend that you either say, um, that mo- the explicit recommendations, if you want conditions on there, or say conditions as, um, explained in the staff report. If you wanna be lazy like me.
Modify your motion?
Well, yes, I will. I would like to, uh, make the motion to approve item five D with the two staff recommended conditions.
Second.
So we have a first and a second? Do we first have to vote on that and then... Okay, so let's, uh, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? And now we'll vote on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Denise, next item.
Item five E, petition one zero nine four four twenty nineteen. Conditional use permit for accessory alcohol within a hundred feet of sensitive land use and extended store hours located at eighteen oh one South Waltz Avenue.
Uh, the applicant here is Jonathan Opold. Uh, it's located at the southwest corner of Twenty-Sixth Street and South Waltz Avenue. Uh, the applicant has plans to convert the old, uh, laundromat that's on the corner there just across from USF. Uh, he would like to open, uh, pizzeria and have it open to twelve AM seven days a week. Further, he's looking to have some roughly four taps, um, to do some accessory alcohol, which will be, uh, kind of an accessory use to the, to his proposed pizzeria. Uh, as we know, West Twenty-Sixth Street is identified as a limited access arterial street. Uh, the proposed pizza delivery store with extended hours should be compatible with the neighborhood character and designed in such a way to minimize, uh, their impact on adjacent residential uses as we have to the south. The building is located on Arterial Street, West Twenty-Sixth Street, as we can see here, and across the street from the University of Sioux Falls, which is a large in- institutional use. Further, the applicant is looking to have four beer taps and a few bottles of beer, which will, or alcohol sales will be a minor portion of his entire business. Finally, the existing parking lot, as you can see here, does have access to Twenty-Sixth Street and won't really be, uh, have traffic going through the existing residential neighborhood. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the, uh, project proposed, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Uh, we did have some concerns from, uh, a couple neighbors about, well, if this applicant would go away, what could go there? So we did, uh, wanna condition up for this applicant only if, uh, he would happen to not do his business there or if his business would fail. Uh, if anybody else came in there, they would have to come back for another conditional use permit. And then the other one would be a security management pr- plan approved by the police department, uh, prior to the issuance of any, uh, alcohol license, uh, for this property. And, uh, late this afternoon, I, this afternoon, excuse me, I did talk to one other neighbor. Um, I didn't know if she was gonna be here tonight, but she did have some concerns about the alcohol, not so much the pizzeria, but, uh, just concerns with some of the USF students staying in there all night and drinking, kinda concerned. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So this is to address extended hours and accessory alcohol is the reason for the conditional use?
Correct.
Otherwise, the pizzeria can be opened. It's in the right form. It's zoned correctly for that.
Correct. If the applicant would like to open a pizzeria and have it open from six to ten Monday through Thursday, or excuse me, Sunday through Thursday and then from six to, uh, eleven on Friday and Saturday, he come down and pull a building permit and start construction out there. So it's really, he's looking to extend those hours. And then as we kinda have had a lot of discussions on alcohol sales tonight, uh, the reason why we classify this as accessory alcohol is, is because it's a small portion of their business. I kind of equate it to, if you go to Qdoba, you can get, you know, Corona or so, any kind of other bottle beer there, but they probably sell twenty or thirty a day. So it's a very small portion of, of their existing business, so.
And accessory versus onsite, is there some distinction there?
Yep. So we have three classifications. Tonight, we heard a lot of on-sale alcohol. Uh, those are what we really use for bars, if you're a straight bar or a casino that we've heard of. And those are required five hundred feet of separation. And then our next step that we feel is a little more compatible with residential or sensitive land use is a full-service restaurant. And those are restaurants like Applebee's, Chevy's, ones that have separate bar and separate dining. And their sales are probably more than, more in the dining area, but they still do sell quite a bit of alcohol. And then we have our accessory alcohol, which we kind of, uh, equate to some of these small businesses that are doing minor sales of alcohol, restaurants. And also if you've been to, or your wives have been to, uh, massages or getting their nails done, you can get a, you know, some wine there and that's kind of another accessory alcohol use. And those are a hundred feet from sensitive land uses. So we feel that those are a little more compatible with existing neighborhoods, so.
I think the report referenced pizza delivery. Was that part of it too?
Uh, that I am not sure. I could, we can definitely, the applicant, when he comes up, he can definitely address that, um, if they're gonna do that or if it's gonna be more of just walk-in. But if you look at his plan here, I mean, if you bend over the building, it's very small. I mean, he's, I think he's got five or six tables shown and then kind of a long, um, table against the wall. So really not a lot of people can fit in this existing building.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. We're gonna tag team you here. Uh, my name is Ron Nelson. I represent the property owner and the applicant, John Opold. Prior to, uh, him getting up here, he's gonna pass some stuff around, uh, for you. As I mentioned, uh, I guess I didn't give my address. Uh, Ron Nelson, Nelson Commercial Real Estate, uh, thirty-three oh eight South Kiwanis Avenue. Uh, some of you have seen me before. I've been up here before. I've been doing this for thirty years. And, um, I know how to run neighborhood meetings, at least I, I, I hope to. I very much respect property owners', uh, rights. And, um, I was just kinda joking with the applicant. As we go around and knock on the doors of the owner occupants in the neighborhood to invite them personally to the neighborhood meeting, really, the neighborhood meeting is happening as we're doing that. And kinda with my tongue firmly implanted in my cheek, I said, and if we really do our job right, nobody will show up at the neighborhood meeting because we've addressed their concerns, uh, prior to. And sure enough, only one person showed up at the neighborhood meeting, uh, and that was USF. And, uh, they were in, uh, extreme support of it. Uh, there was one person that we did talk to. It was a Saturday morning. We walked around and, um, uh, expressed some concerns about alcohol. And, uh, we brought them forward. We, I talked to Brett Bradfield, the president of University of Sioux Falls, which is why I'm in this city. I came up here for Sioux Falls, uh, or Sioux Falls College at the time. And so it's very near and dear and special to me and I wanna do something, you know, very responsible and recognizing that alcohol might be, uh, a red flag for them. Uh, USF is very comfortable with this. Augie loves it. Uh, and we've largely got overwhelming support from the neighborhood. As I've mentioned, I've done this for a number of years. I've brought over forty restaurants to Sioux Falls in my real estate career. And never have I seen a presentation like this that has been passed out to you. So, uh, I asked the applicant to give me some ammunition to present to the owner because when we're bringing an offer on a property, an owner kinda likes to know what's going into their building. And he did something like this that just blew me away. I told him then we are gonna have a neighborhood meeting. He modified it to fit the neighborhood. He modified it to fit the neighborhood meeting, which again, I've never seen that in doing this business. So certainly, I think that it almost, we're kind of joking back here. I hope you all don't think this is like a setup tonight, but all of the things that were kind of articulated earlier tonight in terms of issues with some of the previous applicants, we think we've addressed. We think we've addressed responsibly. There is a concern of alcohol in an establishment like this or in any establishments. Certainly alcohol, or at least beer. And I don't even think the applicant is planning to serve bottled beer. I truly think it's just four tap lines is all we're talking about. So I've just never heard any police reports at Red Rosa Pizza, you know, with intoxicated patrons. And we kind of feel like this is going to be a similar situation like Jason brought up. Qdoba, you know, has beer because it goes nice with certain food elements. And that's really all it is. And so we hope that we've done a good job of responsibly addressing the alcohol component in the neighborhood. The other unique component about this petition is, number one, it's small. And so it's never going to be out-of-control management because you can see the whole thing. It's 1,000 square feet. There's six tables. So you're always going to be able to see what's going on there. Number two, it's not like when I came to Sioux Falls College and all the bars in town were advertising everything from quarter taps to $3 pitchers to drown nights and things like that. It's a different world, and we recognize that. And so he's got a very responsible plan for alcohol. I've had a beer probably with half of you on this commission at various social events. So, you know, we all deal with alcohol if done responsibly, and we think we've done that in this plan. And I'd like to introduce the applicant, John Oppold.
Hey, guys. John Oppold. I live at 2428 South Center Avenue here in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So Sunny's Pizzeria. I've been a resident of this neighborhood in particular for a very long time. Grew up very close to here on Jefferson Avenue, probably about, you know, a mile away from this site. And then my wife and I, for the first five years of our marriage, lived about three blocks away from this place. And the reason I named it Sunny's Pizzeria was because our dog, Sunny, French Bulldog, we used to take him on walks past this place. And my wife would always say, if this place ever becomes available, this would be great as a pizza place. So, you know, we were out with our kids because we still live in the neighborhood, less than a mile away on center, just on the other side of Minnesota Avenue. And we were out Pokemon hunting with our kids who are into that. And we saw the signs on the building and sprung into action. So just wanted to give you a little, I guess, context there with me. I'm not, you know, a guy that is just investing in this to make money solely. I mean, this is going to be my livelihood. This is going to be something that, you know, me as a neighborhood resident is doing for the neighborhood. I mean, I care for the neighborhood. I live there. The other thing that I just like to kind of articulate here is that, you know, we've gotten a little bit of media attention, I guess, for the fact that we're across the street from the college. I was very, very forthcoming with the college. I tried to make a plan and be as proactive as possible, just knowing that when I applied for this, that having tap beer across the street from a college is probably going to be sort of a controversial issue. However, you know, as Ron said, really what the plan is, I plan on having four taps onsite. You can see my plans up there. Those are even outdated to the point where the part where it says optional patio, I think some of that's city zoned. So I'm not planning on doing the patio anymore. But we can fit 22 patrons in the restaurant. And you'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to see everybody that comes in. But it's going to be four taps. I plan on only serving locally brewed craft beer that's from Sioux Falls. If anybody's, you know, privy to the craft beer scene, price points for those sorts of things are, you know, five, six, seven bucks apiece. As far as the concern of like college kids coming in and sitting there and drinking all day, I mean, I don't think they'll be able to afford it, quite honestly. And I just don't know a lot of college students that are going to want to come across the street from where they go to school and get drunk, you know? People that work at USF are going to be there drinking, having pizza. And really, accessory alcohol is kind of the point. It's going to be a very small percentage. We got some media coverage lately. SiouxFalls.Business published a story. I put kind of a social sentiment analysis for you guys. Really, SiouxFalls.Business kind of covered it in a very matter-of-fact way. Argus Leader published something yesterday in, you know, I guess because this meeting was happening today, which was a little bit more of a sensationalized approach with kind of the goal to, you know, get readers to comment and engage. And it seemed like they're trying to create this as some sort of a polarizing issue. But I mean, you know, people can laugh and, you know, social media, to me, is a very, you know, good pulse check on what, you know, the community at large thinks of things like this. We've had zero people indicate that they're mad or, you know. We have 602 people that read or, you know, that reacted to the SiouxFalls.Business story. 555 people liked it. We have 93 comments. Two of them were negative. You know, just reading some of the comments, I mean, I'm not going to waste too much of your time here. But I mean, you know, people like Shelley Gaddis said, yes, I've been hoping that something awesome would go in this space. Create a community for the students. You know, Kristy Van Heerd said, brilliant, you know, would have loved that 20 years ago when I went there. Steve Zastro said, hey, I almost leased that building for Crosstown Vinyl, a pizza joint. Would be perfect there. So really, you know, what we're seeing just from the community at large is that, for the most part, everybody's very excited, very supportive. I do have on the backside of my packet kind of a tap beer action plan that I came up with. I don't know, this probably wouldn't suffice, obviously, for a security management plan. And I intend to put one of those together, get it approved by the police. I think we'll be good. Really, the thing about it too is, you know, the atmosphere, it's going to be very much more like a coffee shop, like a restaurant. It's not going to look like a bar. It's not going to be, you know, dimly lit. I mean, it's going to be a pizza place. The hours, really, the only reason I'm trying to extend the hours by two hours on weeknights and an hour on weekends is because there's a possibility that, hey, you know, there's going to be 7:00 PM USF basketball games, volleyball games. And I think it'd really be kind of a shame if I have to close at 10:00 and the game's getting over at 10:00 when people might want to come over and have a slice of pizza. I mean, that's really the only reason for the extended hours. As they had talked about, our parking lot opens up to 26th Street, which is, you know, one of the major roads in town. What we would do for, you know, trying to limit some of the consumption here, I'd put together per-hour limits where it'd be, you know, strictly two beers per hour. And how we would manage that is anybody who wanted to buy a beer would have to start a tab. So we could manage it digitally. So every time you go to ring them up, it shows, okay, this person's had this many. I really think that, you know, the possibility of people hanging out and just drinking all day is, there's going to be slim to none of that. And I'd also just let you know, I would like to form what I call a neighborhood council of like five to seven individuals in the neighborhood that would meet with me to address things like, hey, the noise, the, you know, if there were noise, traffic concerns, alcohol concerns. I mean, I think once we would put this in here, I don't know that there would be that much of a problem with it. I think people are really just kind of reacting to, you know, what they think of as the worst-case scenario. I plan on being extremely involved in this. Obviously, I'm going to be the manager of the place. It's kind of my lifelong dream. So really, you know, I'd just like to thank you guys for, I guess, taking all this into consideration. I tried to be as thorough as possible with everything. And I'm more than happy to work with the neighborhood. As Ron said, we went around and, you know, knocked on doors and found one person that disapproved. We got a letter from someone in Brookings who owned some rental houses. A lot of her concerns seemed a little far-fetched, in my opinion. And they were mentioned in the Argus Leader article. And it seems like a lot of the community at large kind of agree with that. But anyhow, hopefully, I guess I've done enough to inform you guys to make a decision. So questions?
What about the delivery? Are you going to do that?
Delivery, yes. So that is very much up in the air at this point. I'd like to have delivery. However, I think I might just see how it goes without it. One thing that I really kind of envisioned for this is for it to be kind of a place for the community, like a community business. And I don't know that, you know, we're not going to be open late. And with delivery, the nice thing about the place that I'm proposing is, you know, it can be staffed by one or two people. And I don't know that having someone on to deliver would be advantageous. I think a lot of the traffic we will get is within walking distance. So, but yeah, I very much think that, you know, locally-owned neighborhood businesses are a good thing in this city. I think of places like Rosie's. I think of places, you know, like Whiffer's Sandwich Shops. You know, there's not enough of those type of places in town. And you go to other cities and there's a lot of that. So for whatever reason, Sioux Falls isn't like that. We're developed a little differently where everything's kind of on the main strip. But I mean, I see this as being kind of a place for community, for people in the neighborhood. And I will be heavily involved. And, you know, I've so much as put like my address, my phone number, my email address in here, and it circulated this around the neighborhood and said, hey, if you guys have any issues, like seriously, call me. Come to my house. I don't care. It's close, you know, so.
Any other questions for John?
The follow-up to that is, would you accept a condition not to provide delivery?
Not to what?
Not to offer delivery service.
Set up a condition not to?
Yes.
Oh, you mean, oh, yes? I would be willing to do that if that's part of the condition to get this approved, yeah?
Do you think that would affect your business? I mean, if you were to go down that path, if you found that, hey, delivery is being, people are calling and wanting stuff delivered, would that impact, that'd be a?
You know, I don't know. I think there's a lot of delivery places in town. I mean, I feel like this, in my opinion, this is going to be a walking-distance type of place. We're going to get a lot of business when there's, you know, college sporting events. And, you know, I think we'll get people from Sanford that come for lunch, those sorts of things. But I don't think it would negative, I think it would, in my opinion, being denied the accessory alcohol would have more of an effect than delivery. I just don't know that there, I hadn't planned on delivery. I planned on it being a carryout type of a place.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Paulson, I respectfully disagree with that condition. I think I would not support a condition that would restrict you from having delivery because it doesn't really have, it doesn't, I mean, we're looking at a conditional use permit, you know, for alcohol as far as hours and stuff like that. So I like the condition that's already proposed by the staff where the condition would be for this applicant only, so.
And for a security management?
And for a security management.
Right. Yeah, and I've intended to do that all along. I know that Jason has, you know, informed me that that's something that's necessary, and I'm totally fine with that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone in the audience that'd like to address this item? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Caitlin Hoyam. I live at 1905 South Waltz Avenue. I am just over a block away from this establishment. Before I get started, I would like to touch on a couple things as far as being in comparison to Red Rosa. I would like to point out that that is a commercial area, and this is a totally residential area. So there are some differences there. And then also, the social media aspect. Unless you're directly affected by living in that area, you know, things seem great. But the homeowners in that area do have to think of the repercussions of that area. So it's great that he's getting support for the pizzeria. I'm fully supportive of the actual pizzeria. It's just the alcohol issue that sometimes people on social media don't even think that way. So my family has owned a couple businesses in this area for over 60 years. My grandparents bought them. My mom lived in there as she was growing up. And since then, I've lived there for about six years. The houses in that area have always provided affordable housing for that area, whether it be rental houses for small families, some occasional students. But generally, in that area, it is all families, elderly people. It's not really a college area, even though we're right between the colleges. So as a practical matter, when you think about 26th Street, the parking, there is none. So there's not adequate parking for the clientele. Traffic is absolutely a safety hazard. I don't know if any of you have been on that street, but it is very small. There is parking on both sides of that street. And if there's people parked on both streets, it's impossible for two cars to pass. So traffic is absolutely a hazard there for families, children, and then just the general walking public. You know, there would be a lot of walking people from college to college. And I know that's his point, is that there is a lot of walking traffic. Car traffic will be a hazard on my end as living a block away. The walking traffic, that is absolutely a detriment to home value. I'm very well acquainted with the people that walk back and forth through the university from university. And, you know, they do try hard to keep the alcohol out of those neighborhoods, not add to it. So with the traffic problems, inadequate parking, noise, safety issues, just with the extended traffic going back and forth, walking and driving, I would like to be in opposition to the alcohol, for one. I support the small business. I think that's great for the community. It's the alcohol that I don't think is necessary and would long-term potentially be a detriment to home value. And just the underlying issues as someone that is in that area is quite concerning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? If you want to state your name and address for the record, and then pull the mics down a little bit. Thank you.
My name is Charlene Bentoz, and I live at 1015 West 27th Street. I've lived there for 10 years. And I'm concerned, I want this to be a pizza place. I think it's a great idea. And I'm the one on Saturday I think you guys talked to. And I was very open with them. I think it's a good idea. I don't understand the need to stay open till midnight. If it's for the college games, then open it that night. Why do you have to have it open midnight every day? I come home from work. I work with little kids. I teach. I don't want to come home at night and relax like tonight. What time is it? It's almost 9:00 o'clock. We'd go home now. We'd be ready to be relaxing, right? You go out in your deck, you do your thing. We'd be out there and there's some people walking from the pizzeria and there's, you know what I mean? I mean, at 10:00, isn't that soon enough? I mean, I think 10:00 is a reasonable time. I understand on weekends it could be open till 11:00. I don't understand the need to have it that open. I did bring up with him that day, I said, listen, why don't you just not do the alcohol? And he said to me, I can't make a go of it if I don't use the alcohol. Will then use, like, what do you call it? Delivery, delivery. I mean, he's a very nice man. I don't want him to not have his business. But he does not live a- him to not have his business, but he does not live a block from this place, I live one block, if I walk ten steps that way, I see that place, and it's a great place, but why than alcohol? We've all been to college, we've all been college-age, we don't make the best decisions when we're in college, come on, and we don't make the best decisions when we're in college, and we've had two beers an hour, from eight to twelve, that would be eight beers, that's not a little bit, I'm just really concerned, I have a little puggle, and I want to go home, and I want to enjoy my life, this is my home, I understand the business, I didn't want a bar a block from my house, and I don't think that's unreasonable, to say, couldn't we make a go of it with pizza, and then let go of the other? And he kind of says, I don't understand, it's a gathering place, and yet it's not gonna be loud, at midnight, every night of the week, this is Wednesday night, I want to be able to sleep, I just, can't we put some stipulations on it? I'm willing to work with him, I'm willing to, you know, I just, would anybody here want to come home and have to, college kids are college kids, they're good kids, but they're college kids, and they're gonna be a little loud if they've had a little bit of beer, I don't know, I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry, so, and then they compare drinking wine with getting your nails done, college kids don't drink wine like you go and get your nails done, they go and they drink, or they don't drink and they eat their pizza, but I don't see the consistency there, so, just open it up late for the college events, he said that's the only reason he needs it open late, okay, this would be my wish, is that we open it till ten during the week, and then maybe till eleven on the weekends, and then if you got a big college event, I don't care, open it till two in the morning, I mean, I get that, you gotta have your business, but not every night of the week, and this is my house, I love where I live, I am single, I want it safe, and I believe the kids are good kids, but I am so opposed to this with alcohol, and I'm so opposed to this with midnight, can't we work with this a little bit? I want him to succeed, I think it's a great idea, I don't have all the fancy words, but in my heart, I believe he wants to do a good thing, and I want to have a nice house, so I think, isn't there some way we could come together with this? Anyway, I'm opposed as is, but I do appreciate so much, you guys really do listen a long time, because I've been here a while, so, anyway, I'm just, I appreciate your time, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
And I am still opposed to it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item?
Good evening, my name is Shereen Randshaw, I live at 1920 South Waltz, I didn't think I would be able to be here tonight, because I had another meeting, but when I got done with the meeting, I saw you weren't even where close to here, so I came over anyway, so I had sent an email to Jason earlier, which you might have seen, so I'll just kind of read it, I was not contacted when Ron and John went around looking, because I'm not within the three hundred feet, but I'm right on the route between Augustana and 26th Street, right on Waltz Street, so, to get from Augustana to the pizzeria, you're gonna be going right by my house, because I'm right down the street from the Two Tower Dorms, which is where a good share of the students live. I think the pizzeria is a great idea, I think it will go, to me, it will be a perfect business between the two campuses, and it'll be good neighborhood business, I have, I myself have no problem with the accessory alcohol, if John does what he's saying and all his literature he's gonna do, as far as monitoring and make sure it doesn't get out of hand, I trust that that's gonna be fine, I have no concern about noise in the property, because he can control that, obviously, the concern I have is with the extended hours, I don't, I think that the current zoning ordinance about the ten o'clock and the eleven o'clock hours in a residential were set there for a purpose, and I don't see, that hasn't changed any, I don't think twelve o'clock is reasonable in a residential area, it's fine in a, you know, big commercial area, my concern is that at twelve o'clock at night, when the business closed, the students have to leave, and I'm not saying they're gonna be drunk or anything, but when, especially when it's good weather, and everybody's happy, and we're in a good mood, with our friends, we have a group, and we're moving down the street, it's noisy, and when it's good weather, I like to have my windows open, and that noise is a distraction when you're trying to go to sleep, or you're already asleep at midnight. In general, I've lived in that area for over thirty-five years, so I know how those college students are, I have no problem, and generally, they're all really good, we rarely have any issues, but I do know when they're moving from one area to another, and there's groups of them, it's noisy, it's just part of being, part of a group, and being young, and, so I would support the business and his request for an accessory alcohol, but I, as long as he has a plan and sticks to that plan, but I would be opposed to allowing him to extend the hours beyond what zoning already requires, any questions?
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to address this? Otherwise, I'll close the public testimony, and so we'll close public testimony, and then we'll bring you up to address those items, you come on.
I don't want to take up too much more of your guys' time, but to address some of those issues that have kind of been raised here, parking-wise, I've been working with Jason and zoning, from a zoning perspective, there's enough spots for parking, so, to say that has inadequate parking, you know, for the size of the business that it is, we've just found, you know, zoning-wise, it's in accordance of, you know, what's allowable. Walking traffic, I like to say, you know, college kids are gonna be walking through that neighborhood anyway, whether I'm there or not, so, I just think it's a reality of living there, I mean, I lived, like I said, I lived a few blocks away, I lived at 1932 South Cobal Avenue, it's literally two blocks down and two blocks over, so, college kids were walking through at all times of the night, you know, when I lived there, and it wasn't that big of a deal, I mean, a lot of times, you didn't even notice they were there, and they're usually pretty respectful, as the gals had said previously, as far as, you know, the property values, I mean, no offense to laundromats, but, you know, back when it was a laundromat, I don't know if it was, if the property values skyrocketed then, I just don't think that this would have that big of an effect, in fact, I think they might have a larger effect for some of the folks, because there's a lot of rental properties in that area, and I would think that landlords would say, hey, there's a restaurant within walking distance of this place, that would probably be a reason for me to go rent that place, you know, if you're looking for people to rent it, so, really, the close-at-midnight thing, I mean, I want that as an option, you know, for these games, when there's no business after ten PM, I mean, I would close down early, I used to work for a period of time back, before I got married, to kind of help raise some money, I worked at Monks, and they were open till midnight a lot of nights, and we wouldn't even make it to midnight, because about ten PM, things would kind of, you know, peter off, and that was it, so, that's kind of what I'm planning for here, I mean, I'm not gonna keep the place open for an extra two hours if nobody's on the property, but I would like to have the option to have it open if there's a seven PM basketball game, and parents and alumni, and everybody's getting done, and, you know, the team won, and they're jacked up, and they want to go, you know, eat, or, you know, have a couple beers and go home, like, I just don't see how that's that unreasonable. Also, you know, when we talk about college kids, you know, she had mentioned, what if a college kid has eight beers over, you know, the course of four hours, well, I mean, eight at seven apiece, that's fifty-six bucks, I mean, how many college kids can afford fifty-six dollar nights all the time, you know, like, it's just not practical, so, anyway, the University of Sioux Falls and Augustana College have supported this and been very positive, so, I think if you can win over those guys, they're two, you know, Christian schools, conservative, and, you know, I just think that with their support, I think I could win over the rest of the neighborhood, I know most of the neighborhood's very excited about this, I mean, we have a few people that are skeptical, I don't think they're vehemently opposed, I would welcome them to be on the neighborhood committee board, they'd probably be the first we'd call, so, any other questions?
Maybe one thing to look at, too, is adding some bike racks, since a lot of college students will be probably riding their bike, or something like that, too.
Yeah, I'd be totally into that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I will look for commission action.
I will move to approve with the two conditions as proposed by city staff.
City staff propose two conditions?
One was security management plan.
I didn't see that in the write-up, I would second, I'll second that.
What was the other one?
For this applicant.
Applicant only.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, any discussion?
I think location-wise, this seems like a good spot for a pizzeria, I can appreciate some of the comments about a conditional use for alcohol, I think it sounds like the applicant has thought through how they're going to manage that, and look forward to seeing a security management plan, I think, my impression is, this will be a very well-managed group of clientele, so I have a comfort level with this.
I would just like to say, thank you, John, for developing the property, I went to Augustana University a few years back, and quite frankly, shared some of your concerns about the status of the property as is, and how it's been handled, this one was kind of fun for me to dig into some of the history of pizzerias in the area, and I've heard about Charlie's and some of these other establishments, and it sounds kind of like it's been fairly common in the past in this area, also, with it being off of 26th Street, I think you provided adequate parking on the site itself, to alleviate any issues with traffic really going into the neighborhood itself, I also think it's important to note, and it's already been noted, that this is an accessory use, this isn't a large alcohol establishment, it's a pizzeria with an accessory use for malt beverages, I also think it's important to note that these neighborhoods certainly are changing, with the growth of Augustana in the future, there's gonna be a lot of changes like this coming forward before this board, and I think the neighbors need to be aware of that, and that's what happens in large universities that are in municipalities, there's change, and there's establishments that are just like this, so, I would just say, John, thank you for developing this property, it's just about doing what's right for a small business owner, and I'll wholeheartedly be voting in favor of this.
I have known John since Sioux Falls Synergy, I mean, if he runs anything like he did Sioux Falls Synergy, he did a great job, and I'm very detailed, and appreciate for what you did there for our community for that, and I have, I feel that you'll do a great job here, and just working events with you, I know how you hold people accountable, so I feel pretty good about this one, so I will, all those, so, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes, Denise?
Item five F, petition 10489, 2019, preliminary subdivision plan for Cloverleaf Business Park Edition, located east of North Marion Road and south I-90.
The applicant on this one is Eric Wilson, the owner is VF SLLC, it's located, as you can see, on the southwest corner of I-29 and I-90 interchange, approximately one hundred and seven point three acres.
Let them go outside.
As, this location here, this plan before you, should be noted that we've had three months of deferral, so, because of that, and ongoing other issues out there, they're working through, so we're trying to give them additional time to continue working on some of the items they're working through, we are, at this point, recommending a deferral of two months to the November sixth meeting, to give them adequate time to finish their plans, and do that based on the three months, I don't believe the applicant is here on that, but I'll take any questions you may have, if you want to go in more detail on the plan, I can go.
Look for commission action.
I move to defer item five F to the November meeting.
Second.
Oh, is there, actually, first, is there anyone that would like to address this item? In the audience, okay, then I'll look for commission action.
I move to defer item five F to the November 2019 meeting.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, deferred for two months, Denise?
Item five G, petition 10503, 2019, preliminary subdivision plan for Ackerson Edition, located south of East 85th Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself from this item.
Thank you.
This is another one that has been deferred before to you, I'll be brief, applicant is Steven Butskirt, the owner is HA Ackerson, location is the south side of 85th Street, the east side of Minnesota Avenue, it's approximately thirty-eight point eight-nine acres, they are working through some additional things, trying to work with, meeting with the state in this time, so at this time, staff is, and the applicant are asking for a deferral of one month, I will note, as staff, that we've had a number of deferrals, and so, next month, we will be, have a different recommendation than the deferral.
Is the applicant here, or, anyone from the audience like to address this item? Okay, look for commission action.
I move to move item five G, or not, excuse me, defer item five G to the October meeting.
Second.
So, we have a first and a second, defer to next month, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, deferred to next month, Denise?
Item five H, petition 10775, 2019, initial development plan amendment for the Sanford Research Campus, located at 2301 E 60th Street North.
This application is, the owner and applicant is Sanford Health, this specific location is on the northeast side of town, 60th Street North and North Louis Avenue, excuse me, the purpose of this is to add a new master sign plan for the area, updating the one that was previously done a few months ago, total acres, probably ninety point five eight, should be noted that, based on this plan, they're making very minor changes, based on our analysis, the overall total signage is still around one percent difference from what would be allowed under just BCF III standards, and so, based on that, staff is recommending approval, and would look for your support in that.
Any questions for Albert? Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Austin Parks, I'm here representing Sanford Health, 2301 E 60th Street North, kind of as Albert said, we've just had some recent development out in the area, and been looking to do a little bit of additional signage, just with our campus, and kind of with our master plan, so not really reinventing the wheel with anything on here, just requesting a little bit different signage in the area, so, if anybody has any questions, I will gladly answer them.
Commissioners, any questions for Austin? Thanks, Austin.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone in the audience like to address this item? I will look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve item five H.
Second.
So, we have a first and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes, Denise?
Item five I, petition 10776, 2019, initial development plan amendment for Item 5I, petition 10776, 2019, initial development plan amendment for the Sanford Sports Complex located east of I-229 and north-south of West Benson Road.
Owner applicant on this one is also Sanford Health. This one is located on East Benson Road and Northwest Port Avenue. It's approximately 397.68 acres. This is an amendment to their initial development plan to add a signage plan as well for this location. I will say that the Sanford staff has been very good to work with. We've done a lot of back and forth over what makes sense, what they're looking for. And should be noted, just that, again, what we're showing here is a lot of information. And we're trying to do a plan that helps to kind of guess what could go in the future. So if we are pretty close to accurate, we don't have to make amendments to that plan. But things in this plan could absolutely change. Just because something is shown on here does not mean there's a specific plan indicated for that unless it's a blue building that says it's existing. So with that in mind, overall, on this sign plan, we have seven different types of signs indicated, building signage, freestanding signage, campus information, informational directional, large directional, monumental, monument and informational, and then small directional signs. Overall, going through all the details of this plan and showing these seven different kinds of signs here, when we did a staff analysis on that, this overall request did a total signage increase of less than 1%, the amount that would be allowed under the traditional zoning for an RE 2 to 5 zoning district, so typical retail, which is allowed here. So based on that analysis and all that information that's in there, a lot of details, a lot of little signs, that we recommend a staff approval of the plan. And it should help us as staff and them as a business to give the flexibility to move forward as things change. But again, this plan, you will likely see it come back to you in the future as things change in the market and their plans adapt and they grow firmer. So, thank you.
Any questions for Albert? Okay, is the applicant here?
Austin Parks, representing Sanford Health, 2301 E 60th Street North. Kind of just as Albert said, we've had a very good working relationship with the city. And as our campus grows, we obviously need more signage. And the portion of this has to do with the two buildings currently under construction great shots and also our orthopedic clinic out on that site. Just having to put in probably more wayfinding signage as we continue to grow has just become a necessity to make sure people know where they're going. And we hope the complex continues to grow. So if you guys have any questions, I am absolutely open.
Any questions for Austin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Move for approval on item number 5I.
Second.
So a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Denise?
Item 5J, petition 10859, 2019, initial development plan amendment for the Avera South Campus located at 6600 South Louise Avenue.
So owner applicant on this one, the applicant is Jeremy Josephson with Ace Neon Signs. The owner is Avera Health. Seems to be a very popular sign night for healthcare systems. So with this one, this is over on their newest campus, which isn't quite open to the public yet, South Louise Avenue and West 69th Street. Also, a very good working relationship, working with Jeremy and the South and Avera, working on kind of trying to develop this a little bit. We took a slightly different approach on this one than the last one just because there's more unknowns for them at this point in time and where they're looking and going. So there's a little more limited scope, but this area represents about 76.57 acres in total. And you can see here on the plan that only buildings shown are the ones that are built today. So any new plans going on in the future, we will have to come back and amend this regardless. And so that will be done. But this plan here, similar to the other one, indicates seven different types, seven different types of wall signs, total between wall signs, freestanding signs, and directional signs. You can see those different signs on the right-hand side of that screen. Overall, when we did our analysis on this one, didn't, didn't see an increased total. But we did note that based on the limited total scope of development, it's hard to really give you a full calculation. But as things came, come in, then we'll be able to kind of give and take and kind of make sure it balances out as it goes on. So we're not, at this point, have any concerns or worry on this one. So staff is recommending approval of this initial development plan amendment for this master sign plan. And the applicant is here.
Any questions for Albert? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Come up and state your name and address.
Jeremy Josephson, 403 North Kuanis, representing Avera. Albert did a good job of explaining what we got going on there. Don't have anything further to add. If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be straightforward.
Thanks for your patience.
Anyone in the audience like to address this item? If not, I will look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve item 5J.
Second.
So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Denise?
Item 6 is public input on non-agenda items.
So at this time, we will allow anyone in the public to address the commission on non-agenda items. You're allowed up to five minutes. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to give some public input? All right, well, I will look for, German.
I'm Gaylene Riedemann, 6805 West Strabane Trail. I'm a little confused because I thought our issue was on the agenda. I think it's 10:950. We had a letter.
Mr. Chair, it was item 2B on the consent agenda?
I think that was on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, what?
It was on the consent agenda.
But it never came up.
So at the beginning, we would have, we had the consent agenda where we asked if there's anyone that would like to address one of the items. And so what happens with a consent agenda, usually they're non-controversial items.
That flew by me.
Okay. So at this time, unfortunately, that has passed. But I believe that, does that go to city council or? So at that point, he can work with, Jason can work with you to talk about.
I'm sorry, can you?
So it go to city council? So now that it's passed here, it will move to city council. So you'll be able to talk with the city council at their public meeting with it.
So who with the city can I talk to about my concerns?
Jason can help you out with that.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. Thank you. Anyone else like to address some public input? If not, I will look for a German.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you, Sioux Falls.